Thursday, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. And called or call asked for the pledge of allegiance. Let our student please lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right, report on this?
No.
Thank you. Report out a closed session is we have two board members that will be joining two city council members on a committee regarding discussion on the Aliso school property. The I need to adopt our agenda. Has there been any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
Have a motion, please. Kelly and. All student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries five oh. We have public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have comment cards?
None received.
Thank you. We begin with our reports and our first report is from our student board member.
Good evening, fellow board members and members of the public. Um, I thought I'd start by just kind of giving a rundown of what's happening at the different sites. So I thought I'd start with my school, the high school. So something really cool that's happening right now is we're opening our well space officially next week. And what this is, is like, it's an area, a part of our school where students can go during class for like five to ten minutes. And if longer, if needed, and they can receive some support from Ms. Humphries, our student support specialist, as well, it's just a place to calm down, take a breath. And some of the elements in there to help relax are some plants along with diffusers and other stuff. And it's really just an area for students if they're stressed about a test, something like that, take a moment back to recognize like this is not define us and stuff like that. So that's something really cool that's happening. Um, peer mentors is another thing that's happening on our campus as well. And what this is, is it's student to student support. So over the summer, peer mentors go over about a week of training from our student support specialist, Ms. Humphries. And essentially what's included is that they learn some skills like how to identify signs of, you know, students who are struggling with mental illness and stuff like that. And they're there to support the students as well as refer them to Ms. Humphries for further assistance if necessary. Um, and then our club rush just happened on campus with over fifty clubs. We're at historic numbers of clubs this year. Some really cool things is the engineering club, which is led by the advisors, Ms. Merritt, the physics teacher at the high school. It's actually helping with the solar panels at TOW and helping like clean them and get them up and running again. Um, and then the environmental stewards club, which is really cool is they're gonna start doing like events throughout Laguna to help bring awareness about climate change and stuff like that. And it's advised by Ms. Holt, one of our science teachers. So another great example of how, you know, our local level, we're taking action to address climate change and stuff like that. And then Spanish culture club is working in collaboration with ASD to bring his, you know, information and awareness about Hispanic culture month and individuals, you know, who are not typically recognized. Um, to move on to Thurston Middle School now, um, you know, they obviously just kicked off the school year as well. Students got an interpersonalized experience on the first day through a new program called WOW, where they learned about, you know, Thurston's resources as well as some emotional tools as well to kind of get through the year. Because especially for sixth grade is coming in, it's a big leap from TOW to Thurston when you're managing a bunch of new classes and stuff like that. Um, they also, they are also hosting an e-bike academy, which I think is really important because I rode an e-bike for many years. And many members of the public, you know, obviously sometimes the kids and the e-bike riders do not know the rules of the road and stuff like that. So it's really important and appreciative to our police department for providing that. Um, and then we had Mr. Hawkins speaking as well at the Thurston Middle School. And kind of his role there is he's a kind of like a motivational kind of speaker like that. Kind of get the students ready for like the new year as well as speaking to the importance of kindness, which is really important, especially with anti bowling month coming up in October. So those are some things that are happening at Thurston. And then top of the world elementary school where I attended, um, one really cool thing that, um, the principal shared with me is that staff members during lunch have opened in like a classroom area for students who maybe don't want to go run on the field or something like that to do art in the classroom and stuff like that. And it's kind of a calming space at lunch, which I think is really important to kind of take their mind off school. And if they're not super social, which I'm not either, then they can just have a place to relax, which I think is really cool. And then students are learning the importance of digital citizenship in the library, which I think is super important in our day and age with everything becoming more digital, with AI and stuff like that, learning how to, you know, be ethical on the internet and stuff like that. Um, and then dolphin cards, that's still a major hit, uh, they shared among students where kids are getting prizes on Friday and stuff like that based off their positive behaviors. Um, at El Moro, Dr. Hatchell shared with me some cool things. This is awesome. I think that students are greeted each day with music on campus. Like that's just an energizing way, especially like me, when I wake up, I'm like kind of a little groggy. I'm like sludging to get to school. But if the music is like vibrant, I think that's a super awesome way to get students energized for the day. And then a new free after-school offering, which I thought was really cool, was called the Sea Lion Squad. And what this is, it's for students in grades three through five. And essentially it's, you know, a free after-school program. And it teaches students like leadership skills as well as be compassionate with others, which I think is really important in our day and age. And they're planning, you know, they're working on their schools' environmental efforts with recycling encouraged, like put the bottle in the right bin and stuff like that, which is really crucial. Um, and just, and though some of them are learning how to be big buddies to other students, which is kind of creates like a connect, like students to be more connected on campus and build deeper relationships, which I think is really important because those relationships will last all the way through high school. That's all for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have our representatives from our two bargaining units and we'll begin with face it with CSCA.
Good evening. It's nice to be back. Um, I just wanted to thank HR and the district office for our lovely welcome back breakfast. It was very much appreciated. The food was wonderful and it was great for us all to be together and um, listening to our superintendent give a wonderful motivational speech for all of us to start the year. And we appreciated the PD that we had that day, um, and the planning time, which is really important for our staff as well. Um, so we just appreciated Mike's look at the balance of both sides for us. Um, I want to thank our maintenance team and Ryan's team for all the hard work they did this summer. Our schools look fabulous. They always work so hard over this summer and we come back looking refreshed and brand new. This summer Nikki and I spent a week up in Reno at our annual conference and we elected our new president, Adam Weinberger from, he's a campus supervisor from Paris Valley High School. So that was exciting. We also learned that our union membership was up fourteen percent last year and it's the first year since the Janus decision that membership has gone up instead of down. So that was also a very wonderful thing to hear. We also ratified and voted on our contract on the second day of school, which is on your agenda tonight. So it was nice to have that positive step. And um, this year our contract will be completely open. So we will be working with both teams to go through our whole contract. And um, that's it. We just, it's been a great positive start to the new year and we're off and running.
Thank you. And now Sarah for the booth.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while and school is just to mirror what days of said school, the school year started off on a positive note. With time to prepare in our classrooms for the arrival of our students, the traditional welcome back breakfast was greatly appreciated by the staff. Our keynote speaker was Dr. Valoria and he delivered a compelling and well-received presentation. Learned a lot about our leader and so it was well-received and people wish he would have done that sooner. The professional development day for teachers was well organized. We were given options that were tailored to our individual disciplines and broad enough to cater to a diverse group of educators. The pace of the day was just right. So hats off to everyone who planned all those great before school started, uh, days that worked out really well for all of us. Then on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, the students returned to school. And over the past four weeks, teachers have been occupied with learning twenty to one hundred and forty new names, making seating charts, schedule changes, figuring out students' unique learning needs, how to support them, completing four mandated trainings, learning Flex Time Manager, how to roster create and schedule and how to take canvas, I mean, attendance, uh, keeping canvas pages and Google Classroom up to date and published. High school teachers meeting the challenge of their six new bell schedule in six years, checking rosters, updating rosters, then updating them again with all the schedule changes, changing seating charts, again, to support the behavior and learning needs, checking and making sure that students are signing up for flex tutorial, planning tutorial, elementary benchmarks, assessments in math and reading, iReady assessments, preparation for elementary fall conferences, PPIS assemblies, encore teachers continue to provide engaging lessons, returning parent counselor's student emails, coordinating ASB and PALS events, filling out special education five oh four forms, sponsoring and hosting student clubs, staff meetings, PLCs and professional development, high school teachers intro to WASC this year, sixth grade science camp, allowing students to, uh, teachers allowing students to eat lunch in their rooms because of the migratory bees that come around this year. Um, teachers diligently preparing for, prepared for back to school night to extend a warm welcome and provide an introduction to parents or and orienting them to their child's classroom environment. And most importantly, teaching, prepping, grading, keeping students engaged, being creative, caring for students emotionally and academically. Our LBUSD teachers are an amazing group of educators. We are all very lucky to work in this district and we appreciate all the support from our administrators and board. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. That definitely gives us a good insight to why teachers maybe need to use the high school well space. We have a report from our SRO, please. That's where you are.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, it's good to be back and it's been a little bit since my last report. A little more fancy dresses this evening. We just came from our remembrance ceremony uh, for our two fallen officers. Um, it was a really beautiful ceremony. It's, it's nice to keep, uh, keep them in our minds and our prayers for their families. So something I wanted to touch upon, which our student board representative already did. And we keep touching upon it because it's, it's going to be a continuing thing moving forward and that's e-bike education. So up to date, um, we're, we're getting close to two hundred kids that have attended this class. And I'm really proud of that and I'm proud of the, the parent, um, push to get their kids in this class. Because it's not just us, it's, it's the parents too that have to push their kids, um, to attend these courses and then get them educated. Um, since the implementation of this program, we're, we're still seeing a decrease uh, in the amount of e-bike accidents with these kids. Um, in addition, you know, the overall calls for service with community complaints has gone down. Uh, tickets that are having to be written, all that has substantially decreased. So we're going to try and continue that. We're working on trying to implement some type of parent education uh, with the elementary schools, uh, even before they buy these bikes. Uh, so they're aware, um, what bikes are legal, what bikes aren't, uh, what their kids can expect. Um, and the different rules of the roads that these, you know, eleven-year-olds need to learn how to follow, which is, it's pretty crazy that eleven-year-olds are riding bikes around. But nonetheless, we're going to continue to evaluate the needs, um, and come up with, with new ideas and new ways to educate these kids. So, um, in addition to that, uh, we just had our first safety committee meeting, um, this week. Um, it's a partnership between the, uh, uh, police department, the fire department, um, just trying to reevaluate things on a consistent basis and make sure we're staying up uh, with the times as far as site safety for each site, um, giving our input, making sure everybody is refreshed with, um, you know, certain things, how we do things and, and just that collaborative effort is, is very important that we're on the same page. Uh, in addition to that, um, something that Ashley and I really wanted to do this year, um, before school started, we got together and came up with a plan like what, what do we want this year to look like uh, for us and for our police department and our community? And something that we really wanted to try and implement was bringing more of our police officers, to certain events, trying to get them on campus, uh, so the kids know them. In addition to that, um, you know, it's not just your SROs that are out there, you know, for the, for the benefit of these kids, it's our entire police department. And we really wanted to push our, our officers to, to come to the campuses, interact with the kids, you know, um, boo blast, top of the world Bonanza football games. I think the last football game we had upwards of six officers there uh, walking around. That's something that's important to us because we want to make sure that the community knows that it's a collaborative effort with the district, with our police department, even the fire department, um, for the benefit of these kids. So that's something we're going to continue to, to push on to create a sense of safety and security, you know, community-wide. So hopefully you can see more of our officers, um, at these, at these events, not just your SROs. So that's something important to us. Um, outside of that, I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic about this year. It's been a great start. I'm super proud of these kids. Uh, they seem to be hitting their stride. Um, and I'm just very excited for the, for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I know I saw more officers at the game and also at the back to school nights.
Yes, we, yes, exactly.
I just wanted to compliment you on, uh, the e-bike training program going to the primary schools. Um, I live on a one-way street and I had numerous altercations this past week of, I thought they were Thurston students and I says, I know your principal and they told me that they were El Moro students. And I told them that I know their principal and they went, what was her name? So I, I think there's a real need, uh, the, the, the challenge that I see is that they wear the helmets, but they're not attached. I mean, so the helmets are useless if they're not attached. And I mean, I even pulled one over on the side of the street, you know, and yelled at him for, you know, attach the helmet. I mean, I'm turning into this awful person before Halloween.
Uh, so it's something that I am pushing for, um, is to make sure all these kids are wearing the full face helmets. Uh, I think that's important too. Um, so you know, we're, we're reevaluating things and constantly trying to come up with new ideas. Um, but I think getting them at the elementary level, uh, because again, you're having ten, eleven-year-olds, um, even nine-year-olds riding around on these bikes. And I myself have ridden them before and they're a lot heavier than your standard bike. They go a heck of a lot faster and they're a heck of a lot harder to stop. So there's all these different things that come in, come into play when we're dealing with these things, but.
And I think what our student member was pointing out is that the children that are that young, I mean, they have no concept of driving. And essentially what they're now doing is driving. And so they don't know, you know, what it means to be hit by a car as far as what you, you know, an older student has that driving experience and learns about defensive driving. So that's what we see. I mean, they're, they just go flying through or come late through a crosswalk and.
It's, it's their ability to get up to a certain speed with putting in limited effort.
Yeah.
I want to bring it back to when I was a kid and you had to pedal your, uh, your behind the school. But, um, you know, it's, it's, um, it is, uh, it is a positive thing though. I, I think that, you know, the e-mobility and the kids, uh, their ability to get around town with lessening traffic and all that is, is a positive thing. Um, it's just making sure that they're doing it in a safe manner.
I also think what member Kelly is an idea, if we all take that responsibility so that then we comment not, not, not attacking them like Jim is not a, he doesn't attack them. He just.
It does, yeah.
But it does. It really truly does. So if we're reaching out to educate parents more, then we do the same thing with the community in general.
Yeah.
And so then you can make a comment when you see, um, a young person that's, you know, you need to buckle that. We've, we've done that, you know, buckle your helmet and then you stop and buckle it up.
Yeah.
They may go two blocks and unbuckle it, but for the moment it helps.
Actually, it's a village.
A complete effort. Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
I can hear you, okay?
Issue around safety, but the e-bikes, there's so many that if people are speeding through town and they're driving, that it, it's just a risk because there's just too much. And also since I live on Park Avenue, both cars and e-bikes go so fast down Park Avenue. So I think we'll all be safer if e-bikes and cars slow down. It, it makes me really nervous. Every morning I come out and I see these kids and cars doing like fifty plus miles an hour down Park. It's, yeah. So anyway, I've said that to you before, but I'm going to keep bringing it up because it makes me so nervous every morning. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yes, Officer Yoldin, I have two new things to mention in the realm of e-bikes. Um, one is you mentioned some interaction with parents around the topic. And I think because of our unique topography with the hills, um, the maintenance on the bikes is really important. So that might be in our two point O classes, something to consider. Uh, the, uh, many parents don't know how to properly maintain a moped-like or an electrified bicycle. The brakes go out faster. I mean, we've had kids involved in accidents where literally their wheel was not on tight enough. And that's actually for any child driver, that's really on the parents to be inspecting their bike and changing brakes and brake pads more frequently. So that might be a great way to partner with maybe a community partner or to just talk about the maintenance piece of it. That's on the parents. And then my second part is on our legislators. So there are a couple of bills um, on the governor's desk in this current legislative session that relate to e-bikes. And I'd love to hear maybe at our next meeting or a future meeting, um, if any of those impact our students. So once we get through this.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that moving forward too. Um, we're actually part of a, a little legislative group that was working on that since we were kind of at the forefront of it. Um, you know, as far as licensing is concerned, uh, what age is appropriate for a kid to ride one of these bikes, uh, so on and so forth. And then to your point, as far as the bike maintenance is concerned, um, that's actually part of my presentation that I give to the middle school students, um, is properly maintaining their bike. Because like I said, those things are a lot heavier. Unfortunately, the brakes that they put on there aren't the best and they'll wear down to the pads real quick. And then you start hearing that really high pitched squeaky sound. I mean, it's almost metal on metal and those things aren't going to stop very quickly, um, the amount of use and all these different things. So, um, I make sure that that's a, that's a topic that I hit on, uh, with the kids, but it is, yes, it is up to the parents um, to make sure that those bikes are properly maintained. Because if your brakes go out on that thing or they don't slow down as quickly as they're used to, that's, that's when the, the accidents happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a report from our superintendent, Dr. Gloria.
I'll try to be brief, uh, because we also have our back to school report, but a lot has happened since our last meeting, obviously. Uh, we did open school. Um, we've had back to school nights. Um, we've had a school power meeting, uh, and, uh, I think they are planning for their dodgeball, um, which is forthcoming. Uh, I've attended the PTA council meeting along with the Welcome Tea, um, which was hosted at Sapphire for the new, uh, new families. Um, and, uh, we've actually hosted already two of our traveling cafes where we bring lunch to staff. Um, we did that at both El Moro and Thurston. So it's been a busy time, um, as we all recognize and, uh, just it's been a great start to the year. So I'm excited to give the opening of schools report.
Thank you. So that's, we move to our executive cabinet. We'll begin with Mr. Dixon, please.
Thank you, President Vickers. Uh, just briefly, our business office, we're finishing up our audit of last year. And tonight you'll see the unaudited actuals for your review and acceptance tonight. Um, it's a very smooth process. Our auditors came in last week in person for four of the five days. And now they're finishing up the review, uh, remotely in our offices. And we'll bring back the audited financials to you in December or January at the latest. Thank you.
Mr. Condon.
Yes. Good evening, President Vickers. Uh, at this time, no report. We'll be speaking at the back to school night report. Thank you.
Dr. Mayberry?
The same. I will save it for the back to school report. Thank you.
Thank you. That's next on our agenda is our leadership staff presenting the opening of schools report. And who's beginning? You. Okay.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're all going to speak, which is good. Oh, no way. I'm talking to my keynote speech. Yeah. They wonder why it took so long. It's, I don't like talking about myself, so. It's all right. We're up to go. All right. Well, uh, tonight we really wanted just to kind of kick off the year. Um, it's been a really, uh, positive start. Um, so we wanted to kind of review, um, really briefly with, uh, with all of you, where we are, um, in terms of enrollment, um, some of the things that, uh, you know, our school year kind of actually starts as soon as the last year ends with our summer programming, our excellent learning opportunities lead. So we'll kind of just really briefly touch on all those topics as well. You're going to get, um, uh, kind of ping pong balled around here because we're going to go back and forth. And I'll have some actually folks from the audience will be standing up as well. Um, really kind of being able to give you a full scope of all the different pieces that are, that have been going on. So. So most importantly, the kids showed up, right? So we had, um, which is always important for us. We had just under, uh, twenty-four hundred students. It's still ebbs and flows as I've kind of mentioned to you in the weekly updates. Um, right now El Moro is, uh, tracking and this was as of a couple of days ago, so it could very well have changed, but they're about four hundred and twenty-three students. Top of the world's about five fifty-seven. Uh, Thurston there right across the middle is, uh, five hundred and twenty and the high school is the eight hundred and eighty-eight. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty-one kinder students approximately and, um, thirty-seven TK students. We are able to actually open up a couple of spots. Uh, so we have two students that are actually outside of the, um, required age group for TK, uh, that even though it's not technically, well, well, for everybody else, it's required. Uh, it's not our requirement for age because we're just following the state requirements. But, uh, because we're not getting any funding for it, we can, we can do whatever we want necessarily. So, um, we have two more students there. So there's, uh, so we're excited because that kind of puts us right up to where our, our number was that we were hoping for, uh, just under forty students. About two and a half percent of our students are English learners. That's, that's dropping year over year. Um, it used to be double that, um, years ago, but now it's, it's getting much smaller. On the flip side, the economically disadvantaged group has grown a little bit. Um, again, part of that's a change in definition and some different things at this, uh, federal government level. Um, there's some self-reporting now that can happen. Um, so that number has crept up a little bit. We have about ten percent of our students receiving special education services. That's, uh, dropped over the last couple of years, about two percent. Um, and we had a hundred and forty-three new students, not counting, um, the TK and kinder students that came into us this year. So, um, again, uh, as you well know, we have, uh, an amazing group of, uh, folks that provide support roles as well. A couple that I'd point out, one, um, our community liaison, which, uh, is functioning out of our new family resource center. Uh, we're very excited again and look forward to the, um, grand opening for that of, uh, location. Uh, our environmental literacy teacher, um, uh, Glow, and she's been, uh, she's been fantastic. She's really engaging and, and moving the ball forward on that. And I'm really excited to see what, uh, what we have, um, as an outcome there. And obviously, you know, we still have all the other things we've always been doing, career education, um, family engagement. And then we have our teachers in special assignments specifically. In the addition, we've added another VAPA, um, a support person at El Moro in Camma Stevens, um, and we added another district librarian in Glenn Warren. So who have actually an opportunity to hear from tonight as well. So again, very, very good, um, start to the year. Um, we're really happy where the numbers are, are falling in and I think Mike will kind of review a little bit about, uh, kind of, uh, general class size involvements. One of the areas that I did talk about, I have my keynote, so I'll give you a little glimpse into it. We did talk about the framework for the future and specifically our profile of a learner. It's really just a, a framework and a guide, right? And, and as you're well aware, we went through a lot of iterations. Um, but really our, our intent is, um, for our students to, you know, have access to those durable skills, uh, soft skills that, um, you don't see on a transcript, right? Uh, yeah, the As and Bs on transcripts tell a portion of a story. But really when, as they walk out the door, having these skills in their, um, uh, at their disposal, because these are all career skills. These are all life skills that students are going to need. So we really want to continue to work on the, in these areas. And so it gives us an opportunity to kind of look at our professional development and how we're functioning our professional development to meet these. Right? We're not going to be able to train on all of these all at once. So we're looking at being really thoughtful around how do we tackle these? Um, you know, one or two at a time over the course of a couple of years. So we train teachers on, you know, what does this look like on our classrooms that are from a TK twelve level, right? So again, very, um, excited to have this. I think it is something that, um, everybody, uh, was able to kind of recognize and say, yeah, these are all really valuable, important pieces. It's not, again, encompassing of all the things we do because that document would be extremely long. But it really does help us kind of keep the focus on the focus around some of the really valuable things. And then, and again, this was, this was something that was a year in the making, uh, as it relates to kind of students and, and families and parents kind of really talking to us about what they expect. Uh, and from their students as they walk out the door. And I think, you know, we've all had, been able to have conversations about it more recently. And, you know, the, the words mean more or less things to these students. And that's what really mattered for us as we started to develop and design it was when we asked them what these words meant, they could articulate that. And ultimately that's, that's the audience, making sure that they understand what the expectations are. So prior to us kicking off the school year with our, uh, all of our staff and CSCA and, and our teaching staff, counseling staff, um, our leadership team, you know, had an opportunity to get together. And over two days, uh, we really spent some time kind of really reflecting on the past year, thinking about where we're moving in terms of the next year. We'd spend some time goal setting, um, talking about some of the, the data that we had access to, uh, looking for those opportunities to celebrate and where those opportunities are for growth. Uh, really important is, you know, we, we actually focus on those core beliefs of continuously improving, relationships being extremely important to the work that we do. So we did spend some time together. Um, we have a cornhole tournament, which there are certain people that you definitely do not want to play cornhole. Um, we have a cornhole tournament, which there are certain people that you definitely do not want to play cornhole against in this, uh, leadership team. Uh, Brian Carlson being one of them. That guy plays, he is, uh, hands down probably the best cornhole player I've ever seen. Um, but it was fun. This group is highly, highly competitive. So, um, it's fun to watch them, uh, uh, team up and, uh, and take each other on. Um, we also had an opportunity, um, to work with Learner Center Collaborative. Um, as we talked about really our, uh, port profile of a learner and kind of those steps and moving forward as a leader. Um, and then we did take some time and thanks to Jeff for, for hosting, uh, the leadership team. Um, at, uh, at his location and that picture down the bottom right is, is the team and a lot of the team, not all of the team members that were there. And I really do appreciate. Um, all the support the board has provided, all the support our, um, our groups provide us in, in terms of Thason and, uh. Sarah for being able to come as well, because you'll see they're both in the picture as well. So. Again, we just are really lucky to have such an amazing place. Um, in, in my opinion, I have an amazing team in the audience here, um, that make this, uh, make this district what it is. So. You're up.
Thank you. So this year we had a new model to the three days before the school starts. We, we combined our welcome back breakfast with our all staff PD day. Um, and as has been shared, our esteemed leader, Dr. Valoria kicked off. The PD day with a keynote speaks where he, uh, well received keynote, sharing his personal story. Um, see very extremely, extremely positive feedback from both staff in person and through the survey, his diverse background and. Upbringing resonated with a lot of people and reminded us the staff of the why behind our collective agreements. Staff attended fifty-two different offerings, twenty-five of which facilitated by our own, our own staff, which is very nice. We also had an extended catered lunch with ten different, um, wellness activities during that time. And the survey data showed a solid A plus. So we're, we're excited about that. And we had standing room only in our Calstares and Calpers, uh, uh, retirement sessions. So it was always exciting. And here is Dr. Mayberry to share some more.
Thank you. Uh, yeah. And on the upper right, you'll see we're kicking off, uh, our personalized and flexible professional learning experiences for teachers. Um, and that includes a wide variety of different things that are happening this summer. We did do unit redesign. We had almost thirty participants there. Uh, we've got our fall and spring, uh, cohort dates that we're settling in now. Uh, we've already started doing some lunch and learns, uh, with staff at some of the sites. Uh, we have some school visits that are set up, uh, to visit, uh, some schools. Uh, they're doing similar work around a similar journey around the learner profile that we'll go visit some schools in October down in the San Diego area. Uh, and then we have currently have, uh, eight learning walks set up at our four different schools right now. We're expecting to add more, but we have eight that are scheduled at this time. Um, for staff to go visit and learn and, and walk in through classrooms together.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Mayberry. Um, so as you know, we began a recruitment process in early March for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we worked tirelessly all the way through the start of school and still doing so now. We welcomed nineteen classified staff members and thirteen certificated staff members to the LBUSD family. All across all four sites in the district office. Um, so while experiencing declining enrollments in recent years, it has been the board's desire. To continue to keep class sizes small. And as you can see, um, we have our K three average for this year is, is eighteen. Our fourth and fifth grade class size average is twenty-six. Middle school has a class size average in the core academic classes of twenty-five. And the high school is experiencing a class size average in the core academic classes at twenty-two. Um, so that's excellent. And then for this school year, some focus with the HR department, we are, um, launching, the, as you've heard, we've launched in the new volunteer Raptor system using that to, uh. To streamline our process and our efficiency around the whole managing the volunteer management system. Um, we've also added a goal setting component for certificated staff in their non-evaluation years. Which, um, allows us, it's, it's exciting for us to allow us to align our PD that we do throughout the year to the actual. Goals that these teachers are working on to make it very meaningful and, and impactful for them. Um, we're also launching fully our, our online evaluation system through frontline. Um, this provides better accountability, ensures critical deadlines are met. And also aligns with our sit, our sustainability goals around the reducing our paper usage. And then of course, as you know, promoting wellness is a huge aspect, um, and focus for all staff to support, so they can come to, to work being their best selves. So from the addition of Carisolus this past spring to providing all staff access to, um, levels of health benefits, the continued offering of our employee assistance program through Health Advocate. And this evening you'll have an opportunity to, uh, um, to vote on the latest proposal of adding the comm app, um, for all, uh, all staff members to access that as well. Um, so again, we strive to provide our staff with a wealth of preventative and, and crisis resources to ensure them to be, um. Again, their, their best selves when they come to work. Thank you.
Good evening. I have the privilege of sharing with you a few of our highlights from our LBUSD expanded learning programs. This year we were pleased to offer five di- different distinct summer programs, serving a combined total of seven hundred and twenty-two enrollments. All of our LBUSD summer programs share the same three core goals for our students. Skill development and enhancement, engagement and social connections and confidence and empowerment. Our Learn and Rich Advance Discover, or LEAD program for short. In its third year of implementation, offered students in elementary, middle and high school the opportunity to explore new interests and pursue existing passions. Through a wide variety of no cost enrichment courses encompassing areas such as visual and performing arts. Science, engineering and design, social emotional learning, fitness. Gardening and even confection making at both the one oh one and one oh two levels for those very advanced confectioners. Our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, or ELOP, offered in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach. Wrapped up its first year of implementation with a full day summer camp experience for our students. ELOP provided participants significant opportunities for high interest activities, social connections, and most importantly, a lot of fun. LBUSD's Extended School Year, or ESY program focused on serving students with exceptionalities, starting at the preschool level. Who were recommended by their school's special education providers. The focus of ESY is to ensure students maintain goal progress on their individual education plan goals. Next up, our summer academies serve students recommended for academic intervention and skill remediation. Small class sizes, individualized support and personalized learning are the hallmarks of these LBUSD programs. At the high school level, we were excited to introduce two new jumpstart classes. Algebra one and ninth grade English to provide students recommended by their middle school teams, the opportunity to preview high school courses. And learned skills essential for success in high school. Now into fall, we continue to prioritize student agency, empowerment and connectedness through activities such as middle school sports. Which had a wildly successful year in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Serving a combined total of five hundred and twenty-four athletes. We wish to extend a special thank you to Dr. Valoria and to our governing board for your support of expanded programming. And making these meaningful experiences possible for our students. We now invite you to take a peek into some of our summer classes to see what happens in Laguna Beach Unified when school is out for summer.
LEAD is Learn and Rich Advance and Discover. It's the summer program that LBUSD offers over the course of two weeks. And, um, during that two weeks, we had three hundred and eighty-three students attend, uh, fifty-six unique classes. Uh, that were held here on the campus of Thurston Middle School. I would just say that I'm really proud of LBUSD for offering a program like this to parents. Free of charge. So many parents reported that this program was such a huge help to them, especially parents who have careers. That need, uh, activities for their kids in the summer. These were, you know, LBUSD teachers offering amazing programs, absolutely free of charge to parents, full day programs as well. With the opportunity to take the bus to the Boys and Girls Club after for extended care. So it was really, uh, an amazing help to parents throughout our community.
The high school summer school program is meant for, uh, remediation of students that haven't passed or have transferred in and need to make up classes. One of the reasons I really like being summer school and being the coordinator of summer school is the. Staff that I get to work with and the staff has been pretty much the same staff for the last three years and they're just amazing. They work for the students, any changes that we may, uh, need or anything that arises. They come to the challenge and I love being there to support the staff, which then in turn supports the students. So it's just a really great environment for the kids. And that is because of the staff that we have here in Summer School for LBUSD.
Summer Academy this year was great. Uh, we had about a hundred and twenty-five students come in and really do some intensive academic intervention. Uh, small class sizes really helped students drill down to their specific skills and their needs. And then we culminated at the end of the year with, uh, our summer fest where students came out and they got to demonstrate a lot of what they were learning and have some fun. The enrichment activities that the students got in, whether it was art with, uh, Ms. J O B or music with Mr. Wade. Uh, being able to see some of the counseling and SEL lessons that were pushed into the classroom. Um, just those kinds of things that students got to take a break from those intensive academic interventions and really just have fun, but also continue their learning. So I think for me as a professional, it really opened my lens to working with our elementary staff. Um, as a high school administrator, I don't typically cross over with them a lot. And I got to know them both personally and professionally, see their strengths, be able to help them and support them. Um, and really champion the work that they do, not just during the summer, but throughout the whole year.
Hi, I don't have a fun video to show, but I do have a fun age group, early learning. So with our kindergarten program, we have seven classes across both of our elementary sites. With, uh, sixty-nine students at TOW and fifty-three at El Moro. We actually just had a new kindergarten student start today. So kind of ebbs and flows as Dr. Valoria had said earlier. Uh, we did run a TK and K readiness camp this summer. We had four sessions across both elementary sites with three of our kindergarten teachers. Um, working and just developing kindergarten readiness skills, acclimating to a new environment, working on social skills. And out of the, uh, thirty kindergarten students who participated in kindergarten, uh, summer camp. We've seen a great success as they entered and started their, uh, first month of school. So that is great. In terms of transitional kindergarten, we have nineteen students at TOW and eighteen at El Moro. This is over a twenty percent increase from last year. And as we expanded our age range to April second, as Dr. Valoria said. They did also offer an expanded age range to June second, maintaining our twelve-one ratio. So we were able to enroll a few extra students. And looking ahead to the fall of twenty twenty-four, as they continue to expand their age range and probably offer another expanded, uh, group. We do anticipate the need for two additional TK teachers, one at each site. We also had, uh, ten of our TK students participate in our TK readiness camp and also showing success our first month of school. Uh, in terms of preschool readiness, we do have one special day class currently at TOW with seven students. And looking ahead to the fall of twenty twenty-four, we would like to add a general education preschool class to offer inclusion opportunities to our preschool students. Offer our La- Laguna Beach parents opportunities to participate in a successful early learning program to develop. Those readiness skills for their students to go into our TK and K classrooms. We also have a learning link program that runs at TOW twice a week and we just started a couple of weeks ago. Last, uh, year we had thirty-nine families enroll. This year we have about sixty registered. We don't get that on a regular basis, but. Probably about fifteen students. It's a drop-in program with hands-on activities for students and their caregivers to participate in. And work on some of those social emotional skills, work on, uh, readiness, fine motor activities.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, the next piece we want to talk a little bit about is just some, some, uh, career exploration, uh, and awareness activities that. Uh, that we've been working on, like near the end of last year and heading into, heading into this school year. Um, we've got, uh, we do, as you know, we have with our partnership with CCA, uh, we have over twenty-three pathways kids can access. We have eight that are on our campus. And then we've added, uh, the last year, we continue to expand and add new equipment, including, uh, we had a spider student run enterprise, um, where the kids are producing things through the business entrepreneurship approach. Called the Artist's Design Shop. Um, we've actually expanded that to more classes. Uh, so that's expanding this year. Uh, la- near the, the end of last year, we really get a whole lot of use out of it. We've added the new EMT ambulance and animatage table for our medical classes. Uh, we've also added some new printers at the middle and high school for those pathways, uh, direct film, the garment printer. At high school and then a roll-in vinyl printer. So there are lots of things kids can design and then immediately print out, uh, on the spot. Um, the middle school, uh, you know, has, has two pathways now there. Uh, last, this year we currently between sixth, seventh and eighth graders. That are in either the graphic design, uh, which is the multimedia class or the professional theater. There's over two hundred students that are in those two pathways, uh, between sixth, seventh and eighth grade, uh, for this school year. And then next slide, uh, takes a look a little bit at college, uh, readiness. Um, we do have, uh, our, our plethora of options between honors and AP courses. Uh, we did add two more for this school year. Uh, AP Human Geography and AP Chemistry are up for the first time, uh, here, uh, at the Laguna Beach High School. Uh, and then again, we have dual enrollment, uh, in our partner, in our C cap, uh, partnership with IVC Irvine Valley College. Uh, the summer we have sociology, this fall we have business and the spring we'll have, uh, entre- entrepreneurship. And then last spring, um, we're continuing the pilot program we did where we did a, the counseling one course. Where we integrate that into our global studies course, um, as, as ninth graders. So all those students in that class will get one point five college credits. Um, where the, the IVC staff comes over and actually teaches the class. Um, and then our, uh, our visual and performing arts, um, programs are up and running. We dial this. We have a variety of courses, obviously lots of this driven by student interest or number of kids that sign up. Uh, this fall we have thirty-three, uh, visual performing arts classes at the high school and thirteen, uh, at the middle school. And then I'm going to introduce, um, the next slide, uh, here. I'm going to introduce our new. Digital media and library specialist, uh, who was recently hired this summer, uh, Glenn Warren. Uh, who comes from us from a few different districts, but Glenn, um, as you'll get to know him, uh, has a lot of energy.
Yeah.
Uh, but brings a wealth, a wealth of experience, uh, has been well recognized in this area. He's actually a co-writer for the California Model, uh, School Library Standards, uh, back in twenty-ten, I believe. Uh, he's been a semifinalist for California Teacher of the Year. Uh, he won the Q, uh, which you know is around a lot of ed tech. Ed tech professional learning experiences. He won a Q Gold Disc Award, uh, a few years ago, actually maybe more than a few, about four or five years ago. Um, he was recognized as Classroom of the Future Innovative Educator Award, uh, in twenty-twenty. So comes to us with a wealth of experience. We're excited. To have him jump on board and lead a lot of this work around our library information and research services. He's going to share a little bit with us today.
Well, the, the most recent reward is that I got hired at Laguna Beach Unified School District. So yay me. Um, I'm so happy to be here. Thank you, Board, for having me. Thank you for your leadership that actually opened the door to allow this to be here with you. I'm so happy. Um, I'm a fan of libraries, uh, because libraries, um, uh, empower students. They. Folk, uh, creative problem solving. They create empathetic citizens. That sounds like something we could use. Anyway. Let's get over to digital resources that we have. The digital resources that are available to our students is a subset of our library services for the, we're going to be a unified school district. And basically the three points I want to go over is that they are continually accessible. Twenty-four, seven, uh, it does at any time, anywhere, any device, at school or at home, these resources can be, uh, accessed. Um, so that's really exciting that they, they are always available. And so that's true for all of, all the resources there. And also curricular supports. In a sense, all of these resources that are up here. Uh, are in a sense a click curricular support, but. There are times that you need more than just an access to, um, a resource. You need a, you need help. And I'm very excited to talk about the fact that we actually have a paper, which is a tutoring, twenty-four hour tutoring source for our students. So. When you have that question, if you've ever been at home trying to help somebody with their homework and you realize you didn't know. Um, this is a great place to go to get a real person to help you, uh, with your, with your learning. So how, how incredible is that? Grammarly also is somewhat in that, in that category. But I also want to get up to the credible information. All of these sources, you know, the internet is full of information. Uh, uh, but not all of it's true. Uh, not all of it's factual. Not all of it's vetted. Well, that's not true for these resources. These resources are absolutely, uh, one hundred percent vetted. In fact. Uh, they are not only vetted for the credibility of their source, but also for the age appropriateness. For example, a kindergartner who has questions, has anybody met a kindergartner? Anyone? Have you? Yeah. What do they have? A lot of questions and we shouldn't necessarily. A lot of questions, and we shouldn't necessarily turn them loose to Google, right? So one of the things we have supplied for our students and empowerment of their learning is resources that are not only vetted but age appropriate for beginning readers or early readers or pre-readers. And so those resources up there, like for example, World Book Early Learning, uh, will read everything to the students, and we can count on them being age-appropriate. Um, so that's, that's one thing. The other, the other piece that's up there is the, like, we take a look at World Book. Uh, World Book Kids, World Book Student, it tiers up for uh the uh the students uh age appropriateness or developmental level. One of the things I think is really exciting also is that for all of our students, K through twelve, Britannica is there as well. You guys probably heard Britannica. Uh, it's again grouped for elementary, middle school, and high school. But with all these incredible resources, they are still somewhat underutilized. They're there. They are used, but they're a little bit underutilized, and I believe library services this year is going to be able to really bolster that up. Uh, and one of the reasons uh why I think is that we want to invoke greater curiosity. So there's a new one that we added, and I came up with this. I hope it's good. I hope it's good. I came up with a new resource that's on Beach uh Beachport called Ask Our Librarians, and that's, that's, the initials are A O L. So that's old school for those of you. Yes, they, they have no idea. I should, should we play a, should we play a tape of a modem coming on? Right? You got mail. But what's really exciting about this is it's actually a, a, a form that's on Beachport where students can ask questions. And those questions, any questions they want, and they go directly to our librarians. And it's only been up for about a week and a half, and we have over a hundred questions that have come from students. And we feed back at them the uh, the, the resources and point them back to these resources. So it's wonderful to see curiosity alive and well and us promoting it. And I think that's uh covers my presentation. Did I do that in three? Thank you.
Congratulations. I've been advocating for you for some time, and uh yes, I just want you to know that uh the library is a source of all knowledge and the better prepared and uh active librarians you have, the better teachers are and the better the students have resources. So thank you Superintendent for finally hiring a state-of-the-art librarian.
I have a question, if you don't mind. Um, I'm just curious at the high school level of where OpenAI fits into what you consider to be library resources and how you're thinking about dealing with that.
Well, I, I, I thank you for having, asking that question of the new guy. Uh, so th- thank you so much because evidently I am now expendable, so thank you.
I don't expect you to have answers yet. I understand.
But I will say this. I will say that when we talk about um all these new technologies, if you think about it, when the internet first came out and the fact that we could just type anything in there, that, that too is crazy, you know, and we had these apps where you could take a picture of math problem that would produce the, now we've got uh technology that can write for us. What this really all comes back down to in a simple answer of to a very complex question is we can't run from what's real. We can't run from what's here. And so with the greater knowledge that is being provided to society, the need to increase our wisdom has never been more important. And to move from judgment to curiosity, from knowledge to wisdom is the endeavor that all of us are supposed to be involved with, and I live every day for that very purpose. How'd I do? Are you okay with that? That I had not, all right, I'm gonna leave now.
President Vickers, can I? Can I, can I add on?
Embrace OpenAI for the simple reason that students are going to be using it, and it would be best if they used it accurately, and we figured out how to relate it to learning objectives as opposed to just having them go on and use it.
I'll give you a hot example. We actually had a math stu- I'll, I'm going to confess something. I had a in the library, there was a student that came up and said, can you help me with these uh two linear equations? I said, sure. And then she came up and said, there are three linear equations. I said, no, no, I can't help you. So I found myself at the end of what I could do, and I confess, I opened up uh OpenAI, and I typed in the, the problem. It produced the entire solution, and I said, now, look, I don't know if this is, this is, you know, credible or not. We need to check this out. So she looked at it and said, okay, fine. Then I called her math teacher in about an hour later. And I said, take a look at this. And she said, oh, that's one solution. I'll bring this in tomorrow, and it'll come up with other solutions for this. So already a math teacher saw a way to get this, and that's just the seedlings of something I don't think any of us can conceive where this could possibly go, but I'm hoping it's wonderful.
Okay, so I, I get to follow that. This feels like trying to explain the GAN limit after a technology presentation. Yeah. Okay, so with regards to transportation, we do have some two key highlights I'd like to bring to your attention this year specifically is our first one is GPS tracking for our families. The way to track the bus that their students are on. We're in the process of finalizing logistics of rollout. We're hoping before the end of this month, and the app is called Bus Zone. And I know it provided some information in the weekly, but we are really close to launching it out to our families, and we're really excited. Another improvement or enhancement I would say that we're doing this year is we're providing multiple stops for our students. And this is beyond the two household students that we already have who would have two stops. Um, this is because we have been able to rebalance our buses over time. After the beginning of the year, once our bus sales are essentially stopped, we free up the remaining seats on the buses to allow students to choose another bus. Because every pass they, they purchase takes a capacity spot on that bus. But as we go into the start of the year, we're able to uh provide the flexibility to add multiple stops for our families. So between that and the new GPS tracking, um, it improves our accountability and increases our flexibility, so we're really excited about that. And then, of course, you can see our ridership. This is very typical at this time of year to be between eight and nine hundred riders, so we're right in the ballpark there. We still, and we, the pilot's gone, but we still offer our high school uh transportation services with our buses. Uh, just at this time, we don't have anyone who's requested a pass. In the past, there's always been a handful. We just, at this point in time of the school year, we haven't had one yet.
Have you noticed any difference with the e-bikes changing our ridership on the buses?
I would have to go and look back maybe a couple of years to see if there was a significant drop, but over the past couple of years, it's been fairly consistent. But again, we had a weird dynamic coming with COVID and coming out of COVID during kind of the e-bike uh craze, so we haven't really looked at that, but it's certainly something I could look into. I imagine we would. I imagine we would, given the amount of e-bikes that we see at each school.
I think one more comment slash question on um high school transportation. Um, I know in the past, we like uh at Thurston worked with the city to add like a second um trolley stop. So one of the reasons some of our numbers might come down is some of those kids in-infrequently but will hop on the trolley and get downtown, so they don't need a bus pass, but they need a way to get downtown. And I've noticed that those two routes now that make that stop go up the hill empty, while the local, which is on-demand transportation that the city provides, has a long list of high school riders that aren't yet drivers waiting for a ride somewhere. So that's one suggestion, maybe to talk with the city over this year to see if that stop could actually load kids before they come up and turn around to pick up kids at Thurston. It's very well-used at Thurston. But it's literally going up empty to turn around at the top of park and come back down, and um you know, sometimes they just need infrequent transportation.
No, good suggestion. We'll definitely connect with the city. Um, we always connect with them regarding their trolley and on-demand service, and as well as the Orange County Transportation Authority for the free bus passes we can give out to all the kids under eighteen right now as well.
It just sounds like the trolley that goes up and down Pacific Coast Highway that has no one on it uh in both directions uh at certain times of the day.
Yeah, and this one is very full. I think it was so full, our middle school principal had to add a second pickup, so it, it gets a lot of kids on it.
Yeah, over the years, it's uh, e- especially Fridays. Fridays, it's packed.
It's packed, yeah.
So they have, they, they have to create a very structured, you know, you, they only have so many passes, only so many spots. Um, so um, they have a, they have to create a uh, an actual process for the certain days that are quite, quite busy versus others, so.
Yeah, it's a nice partnership.
Yeah, like Dr. Kelly points out, I mean, there are um uh the ebb and flow of, of the trolley usage, but and we definitely connect, we connect with the city on a regular basis and talk to them about kind of what ridership they're seeing. Um, specifically, you know, high school students as well, what they're seeing in the mornings and that sort of thing, so um, we're, we'll be doing our regular follow-up with them to kind of get some feedback.
So, so Kelly, you're seeing a lot of students take advantage of the, the car that rides?
Yeah, so for, for high school-level students, I, I don't know as much about Thurston uh middle school students, but you can do an on-demand.
Right.
So I think at high schools, schedule shift, our student board members can chime in, but that before they drive, your schedule shifts a lot. You have practice this day, you don't have practice that day. You have practice at six in the morning, so you actually get out at two, wha- whatever. And so they use, I've noticed they use the on-demand stop at the corner of St. Anne's a lot. There's always a local waiting to pick up kids, and sometimes there's a long ride, and it'll deliver them fairly close to their house. But the trolley that's coming to make two stops at Thurston is coming up park empty because there's not a high school stop to turn around, make a U-turn, and then load the middle school kids and take them downtown. So it's just using some of our public transportation uh systems to benefit everybody and to reduce congestion.
Yeah, I'll just kind of chime onto what uh member Osborne said, like, when I, my, when I, before I was able to drive, I would take the local, like, from, right from the high school, like right to my house, basically, and it dropped me off right there. And oftentimes, I would take that over the trolley just because it was quicker, it was easier to track where it was coming and like where it was at and stuff like that. I would comment, a lot of other students take the local, like, to Anne from school, and I think it's a really cool program the city has. I'm not sure. I, I think less students I know at the high school take the trolley just because it doesn't drop them off right at their house. It might drop them off at a different sto- stop where they have to walk a little bit, and high school students are not into walking after school or before school typically.
I'm also gonna agree. Um, I've actually been in the same local as Carter a few times. But um, I will say that I have had to wait for the local. It took me like an hour and a half to get home once. And a lot of students could benefit from using the trolley to get back to their houses. Because I know there's a lot of kids who live up in this area, Temple Hills Park, and that local, um, like, we live on a completely separate hill. So as many locals as we have compared to the amount of students we have, it's hard for them to cover everywhere. So I feel like that trolley and the use of it for our students would be really beneficial.
Okay, so moving on to nutrition services, as you know, we've transitioned to universal meals, which provides all students a free breakfast and free lunch. As a result, the amount of meals served has increased tremendously, and you can see that on the slide. So a big shout out and thank you to our nutrition staff. Mike and his H R, H R team have been instrumental in making sure we get enough hours in their day to get the work done and provide this massive increase in meals. Um, I know that Lulu had provided in her information report last time uh information regarding her student outreach efforts for this year, and you can see there's been formalized into meal planning Mondays and taste test Tuesdays. Each school site will get that at least once a month. Um, of course, there's opportunities to expand, but we'll be reporting that uh weekly for the, the board um as we go through this. But we find that it's really important, and I know Lulu's already hit the ground running with uh, um, I believe two or three taste tests already this year. And we're only in the third week, so it's near and dear to our hearts. Um, it's going to go a long way in preventing food waste is getting the kids what they want to eat and making sure it meets our nutritious values that we have to meet.
So you're happy with Sedexo?
I am happy with Sedexo, uh, but there's always room to improve in every department, including nutrition. So we're, we're going to keep pushing and always look for uh ways to, ways to improve. Last, I have up here is our facilities projects, and of course, um it's been mentioned tonight that our maintenance and facilities and custodial teams do a fantastic job. A lot of great projects were accomplished this summer. But I would like to just highlight specifically the Family Resource Center, which is very visible to see. Um, and is going to provide an outstanding service for our students and their families. And the initial and ongoing cost to create and operate the F R C is significant. And uh, we really think, we thank school power for their support, but none of this would be possible without the board's support of building and now operating the Family Resource Center. And I know I speak probably on behalf of a lot of families. Um, thank you. This is a very important service. It's something that not every district can provide. We can and we are, and so thank you. I'm looking forward to hearing how the results go this year.
Jeff, where did we get that property? This is what I've been trying to find out. Where we, where did we, how did we get that property? Did someone give that property to us?
I would have to look. That probably happened a long time ago. Um, I just know when, when I started, it was formerly, we, we owned it already, but we leased it out to school.
Even Jan doesn't know, which I'm just amazed.
Yeah.
Um, also, also, where is the well space at the high school?
Yeah, good question. So when you're looking at artist theater and you're facing the theater and the old theater manager's office on the right, it's over there. It's right at the front of the school. So it's access right off Park Avenue, off the front of the school, down the steps there, and, and right adjacent to the theater there. Yeah.
And again, um, it's been a great start, so thank you for all of your support uh and, and dedication to our students. Um, you know, I was able to walk the campuses uh the very beginning of the, of the school year, a lot of smiling faces. Um, very few little tears coming out of kindergarten, but you know, to be expected. Um, but parents were very happy to drop their children off, as usually is the case. Um, and uh, it, it is fun if you're ever interested to see uh drop-off uh every morning at the elementary schools. Um, typically, a lot of excited students who are, you know, struggling to get their backpacks on as they're hopping out of the cars. Uh, but they're excited to see uh their school, their teachers, and, and excited for learning that takes place, so. Um, I, again, uh, thank my staff um for all their hard work and dedication, making uh this year such a great start, so. That's our end of the year, or beginning of the report, end of our beginning of the report.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions on the report?
Well done.
Thank you very much. I think it's uh very appropriate that this is gratitude day. And I would just say, I, I'm, I have a lot of gratitude for the outstanding leadership group that we have. You see all the folks in that one picture, and that we also include so many in that group. Yeah, it takes a lot of people to work together to provide all these services to our students, and I I'm really proud that we have such an, except expansive programs that deal not only with academics, but with all of these social emotional issues. As we just hear constantly that that's an increasing, growing need for our young people. So thank you. Uh, we move now to um public hearings. And we have two of those this evening. Our first is uh, public hearing seven A, ensure availab- the availability of textbooks and instructional materials for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four per Education Code Section six zero one one nine B and certification of provision of standards-aligned instructional materials is. Do we have public comment on this?
No.
Okay. Who is, is anyone? So I'll open the public hearing at whatever, seven oh seven. Any board questions, comments on this? So, close the public hearing. And move to seven B, public hearing, public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with A B one-two-zero-zero chapter one-two-one-three slash nineteen ninety-one, government code three-five-four-seven-point-five and C C R title five, section one-five-four-four-nine, and twenty twenty-three twenty-four negotiated agreement with the California School Employees Association C S E A and its Laguna Beach chapter one-three-one. Any public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. So open the public hearing at seven oh eight. Is there any comment? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And we move to information item, uh, technology update. Mr. Morrison.
Good evening, uh, President Vickers, members of the board. Um, really happy to be here to present to you about our tech services team and some of the projects we're working on with instruction. And um, so let's get into it. So uh, these are, these are just six of the projects that we worked on in the last year and this year at the beginning of this fall. Just to give you kind of an update on some of the things we're doing, I have a couple of members of my tech services team here, uh, Joe Doe and Ryan Hertzey. And one of the things, when you said it's gratitude day, when we did, we did this word cloud activity where we wrote words that describe our team, and the number one word that came in was gratitude. So feel like, like, our team, we, we're really thankful to be here and work here in this district, and we try to practice that every time we meet, so. Um, that's something that we, we believe in. So these uh, these projects, one was we upgraded the phone, these are, these are kind of behind-the-scenes projects, so maybe not terribly exciting, but uh, we upgraded the phone system on the backend of that, and, and that needed to be done. We are installing new cabling in uh Al Moro and Top of the World. Uh, some of the cabling is over eight years old, so it needs, it's getting brittle with the salt air and in some of the open areas, so we need to re- replace it. We're one of the uh, we're one of the only districts, actually, the county said we are the only district that has an unalterable backup in Houston. And that backup is a disaster recovery uh system where at any time, uh, if our student information, God forbid, something happened to the D O uh, and our student information system was down, we can be backed up, and within, what, Ryan, half an hour? Like about a half an hour, thirty minutes, we'd be back up in and give them an hour, we'll give them an hour. Um, so that's something that's powerful. We did, uh, we we upgraded our network last year, but we had, we needed some hardware upgrades. So we worked on those this year, working on those this year, working on some cloud-based controllers so that our wireless is more efficient and effective and up to date. We only have three rooms left for four CLE uh with some straggler, like we did a science, some furniture here for science at Thurston. But uh the three kindergarten rooms at Almoro will be finished in October. And so those those cut pretty much the last bit, there there's a few things left to do. And we're going back and updating some of the things that we didn't do in the first few years. We're going back to those rooms and making sure they're up up to the same standards as the as the last ones, so. Um, this is data from a survey called Bright Bites and every year we do this survey. It's staff and students, teachers and students, third through twelfth. Um, and so this is one on support, so this was directed to teachers. And it's one that we always look at every year in my department to try to improve. So I'm I'm really, the the stripes are of the first time we did the survey, so a long time ago, two thousand fourteen. And this is like nine years later to show you the improvement we've had over these nine years. Um, we're at ninety-four percent within twenty-four hours that we get to those tickets and we help the teachers. That's pretty incredible. Uh, that is up from one per one percent up from last year, so ninety-three to ninety-four. So pretty powerful. This is a combination of curriculum, uh it's a score that Bright Bites generates based on curriculum, staff development, student abilities, staff abilities and support. And then they rank you according, you know, we, I can compare myself to other people that do the survey in the nation. But we're among the highest and every year we've gone up, if you can see, well, almost every year, we've steadily gone up over the years. And uh, so this is a good score for us. These are some of the apps that we use that are most prevalent. Um, so you can see our learning management system, which is Canvas Learning and Google Classroom are in the top three. Obviously, they would be there and then some other apps that we use on a regular basis. Before we renew apps, we look at the data on usage. And we try to determine if it's something we want to continue with, and this is one of the area, places where we can get that usage. Um, I love this chart because it's like an inverse. If you look at the stripes, this is uh, the question was are our students asked to identify and solve authentic problems? So the concept here is that we want to see more of that. That's that's the goal. So you can see like uh nine years ago, it it was directly inverse of what it is now. We're at like forty percent, two percent do uh having that weekly, which is pretty amazing. Uh, this is another uh Bright Bites point of data that shows the research. Uh, the question was, uh, do you conduct research in the the frequency of weekly has increased by, you know, like twenty, thirty percent? Um, and so that's, you can see the monthly has kind of moved over there, which is good. So we're at seventy percent, two percent of weekly, um conducting research weekly. Uh, this came from Chad's uh presentation. Uh, he had, he talked about on your own learning. And this is just some of the stats from that. We developed some podcasts and things where teachers could, on the way to work, they could listen to a thirty-minute podcast and get professional growth uh points or actually hours. And uh we had thirty-four teachers participate and that's just a quote from one of the teachers that participated. And the way that the fact that she liked being able to pause it and kind of learn on her lo, on her own, which is really a powerful way to learn. Some people did it when she didn't, she didn't do, she actually didn't do it when she, she's, I actually talked to her and she said she was doing it when she was doing the laundry. So. Um, so this is one of my favorite projects that we've worked on and and I know you guys know a little bit about it. And this is a unit design and we and uh Dr. Mayberry and I have kind of worked together uh technology services and instruction to develop this with the tech toses and coaches. Um, so it's, it's a powerful project. Uh, and I want to kind of walk you through some of the ideas of it. So uh, Dr. Floria talked about durable skills and what, one of the places we looked at was a nonprofit that is called America Succeeds. And they looked at eighty-two million jobs and they looked at the most prevalent uh job postings and they looked at the most prevalent skills in those job postings. And they came up with a list and we use that when we look at you, our units. We we try to develop skills that our kids are going to use when they graduate in jobs. So that's really one of the things that we looked at. And then we also use our uh profile of a learner to uh to kind of develop our units. So we look at our units through a variety of lenses and this is kind of how we do that. So this is the stats on how many people have done it. Eighty-two teachers have participated, which is one of the most successful programs I've been involved in as far as like voluntary voluntary PD. And uh we have about a hundred and twenty-eight units developed, so and that's in a couple summers in one year.
One of the things that's really interesting about unit design, there's lots of different components we've we've shared uh is that we do look at the UN seventeen sustainable development goals as one of the things we look at. So when we're thinking through a unit, we're trying to get at a very big idea uh that kids need to can feel connected to and also access. That's really important and relevant. And so uh those, those, I'm sure you know those, but you know, things like poverty, education, clean water, clean energy, uh climate action are all part of that. And so there's some really interesting, you can see on here, there's some really interesting um essential questions or big ideas that we're trying to get kids to explore all the way from third grade all the way up to the the high school. So we're thinking about the environment, the kids care about it. We don't have, you know, this, this is immediate connection to students. Uh, the teachers all share that, that this is one of the reasons why they jump into that. One of the favorite ones they did was uh at the third grade level, they were looking at different things that are really important for this community. And so they kind of break off into different groups. One is around tourism, one is around arts, uh one is around environmentalism. And so um, and so you see these third graders are thinking about this and what does that mean to them and what does that mean to the community? So some really interesting um units and questions that we're having kids all ages explore connected to the environmental literacy and sustainability goals that we're working on as a district level as well.
So I want to introduce uh Kim Vogi and I just want to tell you a couple of things about her. She's our tech TOSA over at Almoro. And um she was bold, she was a Q twenty twenty-one blended teacher of the year, blended online teacher of the year. She uh, she's been doing, been in education for about twenty-nine years in a variety of roles, being a coach, an administrator, uh a teacher. And she runs a Facebook group that has twelve thousand five hundred subscribers. It's very vibrant. They're helping each other out with teaching strategies, so it's really cool. Um, she actually wrote the book on how to deploy edge protocols, so if you want to sign copy, she'll do that for you. And I'm just proud to be in a district that uh where some of the top teach, teachers and educators in the state are wanting to come here and to work with us like Glenn and Kim. So uh she's going to explain a little bit about our practices.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, so as Mike mentioned, um, I do a lot of work with Edge Protocols. And I was so happy to see that in Laguna Beach Unified, we use many of these Edge Protocol lesson frames in our signature practices. And so uh for me to come in as a new employee in May and be a part of the unit design that was done this summer and and see these edge protocols already in place and have people know about them and then be able to help and coach and model for them, for teachers. It's been really um a great opportunity. And so just if you're not familiar with the edge protocols, they're basically a lesson frame that um teachers can insert their content very easily into, they can be used K-12. I actually use them in the college course I teach as well. And uh it it really helps students with their learning because they don't have to learn how to learn. They get to learn the content then because they already know how to assemble that information. And so um it's nice for teachers to be able to speak a common language and then for students to know what the expectation is. So if you ever need to see an edge protocol in action, come on over to uh Almoro and I'll be happy to show you.
So this is just the the pay structure and the the way we designed the unit design. Uh, in the, in the summer, they're in-person days, three days in person and during the year it's one and a half days. It ends with a gallery walk where or a symposium where teachers explain and talk about their units and we give them feedback, which is amazing. Um, and then the the three hundred dollars is for the implementation part of the process. Where they survey the students, they actually find out what the students thought about the unit uh and take feedback and reflect on what the student said and how as a teacher it went. How did the unit go with a coach? They will do that process. So it's, it's, it's a great process. Um, these are the additional pay opportunities for that process. We have a lot of internal teaming going on, which will show a video that kind of shows some of that. Um, we up the amount for speaking at a conference and publishing an article based on Dr. Kelly, a little bit of feedback. Uh, and we have two articles published and we have four people that are looking at speaking at a conference, so we're, we're happy about that. Um, we're using a tool called Port Moto. It's a portfolio system uh for all, every teacher that finishes a unit has to produce this portfolio where there's a video that explains their unit, has evidence of what they did with their students. You guys can have access to that when we start producing those this year. This is new for this year. I have about a ten of them, but we're, we'll have a lot more in there this year. And uh we're thinking of using this for students as well, possibly for Portrait of a Learner. And I want to end by showing you a short video from Mindy Hawkins' class. And this shows you that cross-grade level, cross uh cross-school um kind of collaboration that happens during unit design that we don't always see in other projects because it's really a K-12 thing. All that you have kindergarten teachers working with uh high school math teachers, which is remarkable. And um so we'll show this video uh that Andy Chris made.
I'm always looking for something new to engage my students. So as we did our unit development and we spent some time this summer and as I was at the edge of protocols thing, I started looking at what would really grab my kids and help them. And the thing I love about Book Creator is that it's a little bit of everything. Like I do thin slides with the kids and they work on a vocabulary word, but this way you can embed that thin slide into your book and then you keep it for the next time and they can go back through their books. And because they can do things of their own choice, then they were really excited to get started on it.
My experience online with clear is that um I have been trying to um send the videos and being pictured and trying to find pictures that I like. I've been doing one about the hair people. I didn't buy them the color. I learned today about comics that I could put in pictures and baby uh, baby and do bubble bubbles in the pictures. And also doing a really thing in the picture. And I'm like loving it because I've been, I love when the little kids can have some beautiful own books of what they like. I like helping them just find books and just write things that they like and like what they're interested in, like like Stella's, so I was just learning about doll. And I just found dolphin picture and find like a laser gun and then like what you know about them and what you like.
So really, almost every day, my students come in and ask, when do we get to go back to Almoro? When do we get to go up to Thurston? They have loved doing the book creator app and they love being the peer leaders in those classes. And I've been amazed to watch them dig in and sit down next to the students, especially in Almoro this last time, they've had experience at Thurston. And then they got to Almoro and there are more students than kids and they just sat down, got the kids' books open, helped them through those first processes. Um, Ms. Tucker up there has reached out to me and said that the kids are loving it and asking me if she can get onto the website too to help them use it. So it's been a really positive part of our school year and all three of my girls are seniors. They're going to be graduating this year. They're going to be able to take these books with them and remember that this was something that they learned and worked on um here at the high school. So it's been awesome.
All right, that was, that was the last slide. So we're good. So thank you. We can clap for that video.
Thank you.
Wait, Andy does a great job and and uh and Mindy was fantastic in this process. Um, I spoke to thirty administrators uh from around the state on Saturday for a day-long conference and um showed some of this work. And I would say more than half want to do this work that we're doing. They want to do what we're doing. So uh there, there's, they're borrowing and our ideas and they're going to implement some of the these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mike?
I, I just want to make a comment. Um, Mike, this is a fantastic presentation and um the data that you've collected through Bright Bites over the last nine years is phenomenal. The the ways that we've improved in something like service to research skills and curiosity and the way you've captured it um quantitatively and over such a long period of time, it's rare that we get data presented for that long of a period that shows that much growth. So kudos to your team for collecting it and summarizing it um for us. But then I was really just blown away how we went from phones and back and forth through instruction and our tech TOSA. And I, I think you do so much more than what's on the front page and it really came through each slide culminating in that last video with Mindy. So what an asset you are to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. But I do, I will, I have an amazing team. I mean, we're, we have a great team. So thank you though.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mike. And I think for me particularly, having known that we used to have one tech person and that, you know, it's, there's so much available that we can use in a positive way and so much of this is so positive. And and helping teachers and I look at the unit design and think we're allowing teachers to express their creativity and gives more of an ownership in what they're teaching. I think it's just such a great step. And uh we have that support for them, not only um financial support, but also just the recognition of what they're doing as a benefit to students. It's, it's a great, a great program that, and I'm sure they want to copy us because it enhances education. Thank you. Uh, we move to action items under business nine A. Approval of resolution number twenty-three dash ten, increase the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three GAN limit by three million, five hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and sixty cents and adoption of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four district appropriations subject to GAN limits. Do we have public comment on this item?
Unreceived.
Thank you. That's because Jeff's now going to explain it in detail.
Yeah, well, if you thought nine years was good, this has got forty-three years behind it. So this is a, the GAN limit established in nineteen eighty, actually went in uh nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine fiscal year, but took effect nineteen eighty. Um, essentially, the intent of the GAN limit is to keep inflation-adjusted per-person government spending under the nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine spending levels. For schools, the calculation is not necessarily per capita, it's based on average daily attendance and inflation. So those are the two metrics we use. Thankfully, this calculation is done in our standardized account code software automatically. This is the software that's stated California has us enter all of our accounting through. In the case, what we're doing here tonight, um, we exceed the GAN limit by roughly three point five million dollars. So we're asking the board to pass a resolution tonight that transfers that amount to be absorbed by the state. So it now would then count against their GAN limit. The same would be true if we didn't exceed or we had excess uh limit that we didn't need. Um, that excess limit would be transferred to the state and it would increase their buffer or increase their limit that they could dole out. So really, we're taking excess resources in some local uh governments and transferring to the state and and the state's doing the same thing back to those local governments that have room and it all would balance out at the end. For our school district, there's no fiscal impact. Um, we did see an issue with the GAN limit related to the state's portion uh last year, um or actually the prior year. Um, but it's not, there's no fiscal impact to us other than passing this resolution to increase our GAN limit for this year. Any questions?
Any questions? Did I need a motion, please? Need discussion? Jeff's gonna give us a quiz. Nope, no discussion? Okay, is it a roll call? Roll calls?
Chase? Uh, you're voting yes or no on this one? It's automatic. Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malchesky?
Yeah.
President Vickers?
Yes, thank you. Next, um, nine B, approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuals financial report. Next, um, nine B approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuals financial report. Do we have public comment?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Um, as I mentioned, our current audit is underway for last fiscal year, the twenty-two, twenty-three uh, school year. The information that our auditors have is based on our unaudited actuals report, which we're presenting to you tonight. Uh, in short, the revenues that came in uh, based on us closing the books were slightly higher. And that was as expected as our property tax came in about half a percent more than projected. Um, and expenditures came in lower. Um, a lot of that was due to the one-time money being uh, carried over related to the restricted grants. Some uncertainty related to the staffing. If, if you recall the beginning of last year, we had a lot of substitutes and, and people moving around. So we didn't know or have necessarily filled assignments that we thought would have been filled. So that's what led to some of that excess. And then of course, our um, routine maintenance and the services and contracts, um, that fluctuates from year to year, but that was just slightly under budget. And so with that, I present this for your acceptance tonight. Well, happy to answer any questions.
Remember questions?
Uh, Mr. Dixon, can you kind of give us a little bit of a summary of our available funds for one-time uses?
So specific.
Kind of where we're looking in our fifty-four pages.
Absolutely. So you're going to want to look at the components of the ending fund balance and that is going to be. Uh, should be on page five. And when you go through this, this is the same information. You'll look at all of our budget reports, including first interim. But again, your non-spendable um, is revolving cash is usually fifty thousand dollars as the case here. Um, but because we had closed, the result of closing books, we had prepaid some expenditures for this fiscal year. So it counts and that's as, as shown in our fund balance here. And then you have our restricted categorical programs. Those are uh, for the most part, our routine restricted maintenance reserve. And the categoricals that we got from the state and the federal governments over the past couple of years. A good example of that is our arts music discretionary block grant. So it's not assigned any expenditures, but we're recognizing the revenue in our fund balance, knowing that we're going to have to assign expenditures later. As far as the unrestricted or the portion of fund balance available for board goals, which I think is specifically to your question, you're going to look at the potential one-time dollars. And you can see that's a set aside for board goals and priorities and that's now at thirteen million dollars. At adopted budget last year, it was closer to ten million. But you can see our net position has further improved, which is not totally unexpected, given our budget increases over the years.
So we added about three million when we closed the books to that line. I've got you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? And ask for a motion, please? Any discussion? I would just say I had a brief phone conversation with the auditor. That's, they're required to do that. And. I mean, I think they really enjoy coming to a district like ours because it's uh, they have a great team to work with in, in Jeff's office. And all the information is provided to them and we're in such solid financial shape and it's very transparent. Then we have a program like the J F M C, which keeps our representatives to that group very well informed of how the budget works. It's, it's not that easy to understand and Jeff does a great job in breaking it down and making sure that. Our staff understand how the budget works and all the processes. So it was a, like I said, it was a brief conversation because we are in such strong financial position. Thank you. This is not a roll call, right? So we have a student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. Move to section ten, human resources. Uh, ten A, ratification of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with A B. One, two, zero, zero, chapter one, two, one, three slash one, nine, nine, one, government code. Three, five, four, seven point five and C C R title five, section one, five, four, four, nine. The twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four negotiated agreement with the California School Employees Association, C S E A. And it's Laguna Beach chapter one, three, one, and Laguna Beach Unified School District. Do we have public comment on this?
None received.
Thank you. So Mike?
Thank you, President Vickers. So yes, the association and district reach a tentative agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Revisions to the twenty-two, one to twenty-two, four agreement. Again, we use the interest-based bargaining process as the um, to, to facilitate the negotiations process. And just to note, the, the previously approved twenty-two, twenty-three tentative agreement. Included the salary increase for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year of five percent. So that's not included in this tentative agreement. So the staff recommends that the Board of Education ratifies the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four provisions to the twenty-two, one, twenty-two, four. Uh, collective bargaining agreement negotiated by the designated representatives of the California School Employees Association and Laguna Beach Chapter one, thirty-one. And Laguna Beach Unified School District.
Board questions? If not, I'd ask for motion? Any discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Conlon. Thank you to C S E A. I know that's a lot of work that goes into that. So.
Agreed. A lot of work on both sides and I think with using interest-based bargaining has really helped the process. So, student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. Ten B approval of the new job description and position extended day program para educator. Dr. Mayberry, is that yours or is that Mike Collins? Mike, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so as um, Kim Johnson shared earlier. So with the district's expansion of the TK program and the board's interest in providing onsite all day, an onsite all-day option for transitional kindergarten students. We bring forward the approval of this um, extended day program para educator position. The position will oversee the transitional kindergarten extended day program, provide an opportunity for interested TK families to have their TK students stay on campus beyond the school day. C S E A has approved the position and corresponding job description through the six-ten process and ratified by their members. Um, so this position will be six hours per day, placed on the ten-month work calendar, which is two-hundred-and-seventeen days on a range thirty. Of the classified salary schedule. So the staff requests that the board approve this extended day program para educator um, and attached job description. Any questions?
Did I ask if there's public comment? I probably didn't.
No public comment received.
So board questions?
Mike, how, how many students have chosen to take this option? Do we have that or no? Because it hasn't started yet.
We don't have that yet. We were kind of waiting for this and then our tentative start time is we're planning in January to like. So we can, once this is approved, we would then reach out to all our current families to give them time to exit from whatever program they're in. If they're interested in having that one on campus. Um, and so we would probably start it up around January is our estimated time.
Any other questions?
And do we have a sense of whether this will um, impact some of the enrollments? At the Boys and Girls Club? Like are we by offering this taking away enrollments from our community partner? Do we know that because we're busing them there, I guess is what I'm getting at?
In three-thirty when siblings would stay on campus. So we're not trying to take away enrollment. They are almost full in their TK program over there anyway. They only run it at one campus at their uh, Willowbrook Campus. Not Willowbrook, sorry. Canyon Campus, thinking of a preschool. I apologize. So they don't offer it at Bluebird Park TK.
I heard a presentation last week from the director and they're just booming with students and activities. And it's just really, really exciting what they're doing.
So I think um, Ms. Johnson, then so because there's no TK opportunity at Bluebird Park. You're saying some of those families could potentially not be served at all and might be served in our family on a school day on a three o'clock basis.
Correct.
Okay. And so ones that are likely enrolled in Boys and Girls Club would continue their enrollment if they were accessing hours past three.
Exactly.
And if they weren't, then they would now have a choice of which program they might want to enroll in. Okay. Just trying to understand the ramifications. Whenever we move out of the five-year-old zone and we move into four-year-olds and. Hello, there's impacts to either community partners or other private preschools in town. So.
Yeah, preliminary surveys when we talk to our community task force, which includes Boys and Girls Club and all of our local preschools. If there's a need for uh, full day care in terms of like, some of our local preschools only serve half-day options. And so extending that option and giving parents more choices would be helpful.
They like it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Now to ask for a motion, please? Do you have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Not student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. Ten C, approval of contract with Comm Business in the amount not to exceed ten thousand annually.
Thank you, President Vickers. So as we shared earlier, the uh, Laguna Beach Unified School District continues to strive to provide a wealth of resources for uh, for staff. Uh, this year with approval from the board, we're looking to partner with Comm to provide each staff member and up to five dependents access to the Comm app platform. Uh, Comm is a global mental health solution that supports employee mental wellbeing through clinically proven outcomes like better sleep, reduce stress and anxiety and improve mindfulness. Reimbursements from the workers' comp J P A, as well as the, some wellness dollars will be utilized to cover the entire cost of the contract. And the staff recommends that the board approve the contract with Comm Business in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Public comment on this item?
None received.
Any questions from the board? Questions?
Um, do you have any idea how many people may take advantage of this or have you had interest expressed?
Yeah, we met with uh, um, our district wellness committee and, and shared and shared the, the platform with them. They were very interested. Um, looking at uh, talking with Comm when they, when they partner with um, a, a business. They say they typically have at least fifty percent of, of the staff take advantage of it. Um, and we're going to, the nice part, there's, there's some behind the scenes analytics that are going to be shared with us as well about usage. Um, as, and, and also kind of where, some data on kind of where they're, they're, they're most accessing the platforms. We have an idea of kind of where, where maybe the needs are with our staff. So there's, there's some nice uh, that can help us.
In other words, if there's more need for mindfulness or, okay.
Yeah, we're able to actually push out um, kind of workshops and, and other resources like each month tied to kind of what, what we're seeing with the, uh, the trends with our, with our staff.
I would also just like to point out, just so the board knows, the uh, Comm app, the ten thousand dollars could be something we request from our workers' compensation joint powers authority. Uh, uh, last time I looked, we had about fourteen thousand dollars uh, access to for this fiscal year. So that would be our intent. So there would be no impact to our general fund.
Is available to all staff?
That's correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Not asked, motion please? Any discussion? Thank you. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. Ten D, renewal of memorandum of understanding with Barber and Gonzalez. Consulting Group for Interest-Based Bargaining with Laguna Beach Unified School District from September first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Not to exceed eighty-five thousand.
Thank you, President Vickers. Uh, so please note in the background, it does reference that this is a consent calendar item. But during uh, agenda review, we did shift it to an action item. Um, so interest-based bargaining is a negotiation style that which parties collaborate to find mutually beneficial solutions. Uh, to problems, a strategy focused on developing mutual agreements based on the interest of the parties. Um, they include the needs, desires, concerns and fears important to each side. And again, it really does provide um, each party opportunity to solve complicated problems or bring ongoing relationships that allow both sides to maximize interests. We've utilized this process since twenty-seventeen and the staff recommends that the board approve. Uh, the consulting agreement with Barber and Gonzalez Consulting Group from this first, or first through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Public comment on this item?
None received.
Thank you. Board questions?
Mr. Conlon, what's the um, size of the team that participates? From um, union and staff, if you could break it out with this gentleman or with this group?
Yeah, it's uh, teams of, of five on, on each uh, or teams of, sorry, teams of six. So six from management, six from uh. Labu Force, A C S E A, and then one, one facilitator.
Any other questions? If not a motion, please? Pardon me? Oh, okay. Thank you. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. We have some action items in instruction. Eleven A, approval of resolution number twenty-three dash eleven, ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials. For the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year per ed code six, zero, one, one, nine.
No public comments received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the district can confirm that uh, all, that we have provided sufficient material, instructional materials for all students at this time. Uh, and recommend that the board trustees approve the attached resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Uh, the motion please? Any discussion? Roll call? Please?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Osborne? Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malcheski?
Yeah.
President Vickers?
Sorry. Approval of master services agreement between the Laguna Beach Unified School District and Hazel Health, Inc. And Telehealth Services USA at no cost. Public comment on this?
None received.
Thank you. Is this yours?
Yes. Thank you. And our continuous uh, commitment to enhance social emotional wellbeing of our students. Uh, Laguna Beach Unified, our staff is recommending this along with twenty-seven other districts in Orange County. Uh, the Orange County Department of Ed um, want to enter into a formal agreement with Hazel Health, which is uh, an, a current leader in pediatric telehealth. Um, services uh, for the first year or at least up until December of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, there's, this is free at no cost. Uh, it's all the fault, all the current costs is funded. Through the Student Behavior Health Incentive Program. So there's no cost to this. Uh, and obviously all the other districts in the county are also um. Wanting to be a part of this as well. So uh, we want to provide this opportunity for our, our families and students um, going forward.
Any board questions?
Dr. Mayberry, by engaging with Hazel Health, does it in any way kind of encumber us to continue? Um, services with him after that funding runs out? That makes sense?
No, there's no.
No, I think so.
It's, and it's intended for short term as well. It's not really intended for long term. So if a family needs something in the short term, they'll, obviously that's the intent. Um, so for example, if you have Kaiser and it takes you six weeks to get in to see a therapist, you need to see somebody right away. They'll be able to kind of fill that void. And if it was something long-term, then they would say you should go back to your primary care to see, you know, your long-term. Um, it's really, again, that kind of that stopgap. Um, and uh, but they, they offer again the full scope of, of uh, of support to families. So um, students are not able to access it without parent permission. It's also something I think that's important. Um, that uh, you know, students under the age of eighteen still need to have parental permission to access it. Um, and LA County is using this, obviously is this one of the bigger ones. Uh, the state of Hawaii signed on as well. Um, and uh, the county of Orange, uh, under the S B hip grant is, has added this to as, as an option. Really, again, trying to explore those opportunities because what I don't think people really understand is that if you are, uh, if you are a Medi-Cal or CalOptima child. That if you have a need, you'll be seen within twenty-four hours. It's the law. So there's a lot of students that have insurance that don't have that same, that don't qualify for CalOptima. That need support, that can't access mental health care in a short period of time because of the backlog. This is, the intent is to see how this works as that stopgap for the short term. Um, and then obviously if they need additional support long-term. So this was a, a big discussion we had at the county level. Um, amongst all superintendents and every school district in the county is, is bringing on um, this work as a result of that grant. So.
How does this interface with social workers on wheels? The, the, the program the city has um, put into place?
That's more meant for like a triage situation, like an immediate, um, you know, call out for service. Um, yeah, so then what I would say is if you would have the call out for service, this could be some follow-up. Uh, you know, shortly thereafter. If it's not severe, um, you know, they were not having that uh, you know, the P W L O C group coming. Um, this could be someone that they reach out to. This goes in hand in hand with Carisolus, right? So we, we are really kind of trying to build out all these different opportunities for families because Carisolus can also, you can call them and they can find somebody. But if it's immediate, this is available, right? It has good hours of operation that are reasonable um, in time. And then it will give us a chance because there, as we all see, the, the data analytics behind it is extremely important. So they, you know, they'll have the information. They'll let us know how many students are being served. So that we know ultimately down the line, if this is something we wish to continue at any point, right? Right now it's free. Uh, the platform cost um, is about twelve dollars to fifteen dollars per student ADA wise. Um, regardless of the number of students who access it, right? So that's, so if county, you know, as a county, we're, we're paying for it. Um, through the grant. However, once the grant runs out of something that would be interest of us, we would be able to access it at that, that price point, right? Um, right now there's no cost for insurance. There's no copay costs, none of that. However, again, down the line, they may decide that they want cop, a twenty-dollar copay or whatever it might be. Um, they may bill insurance separately, but not now. Now it's going to be free. Um, we, there is word potentially that Kaiser may be uh, someone who uses them. And allows them to bill them directly and they are getting on insurance panels. So they will be able to actually do that um, down the line if that's a um, a, a route that. Ends up happening. Again, the, I think the intent of the state, as you could see, is really to try to maximize CalOptima dollars. Um, uh, Medi-Cal dollars that are sitting on the table. Medi-Cal dollars that are sitting on the table. You probably saw that in the news that there's billions of dollars sitting in federal funds that states are not accessing for youth mental health care, including school districts. That's another thing we'll be starting to work on. But this is just one of those opportunities for us to really kind of bring the care to to the parents and students at a much faster rate.
As soon as we approve this, it'll get started?
No, so there will be a rollout. So I believe December is the rollout, if I recall, January, January one, we start with it. Yeah. So that's the the year will be January one through.
That gives us time to get all the information.
Yeah, there's there's quite a bit of kind of forwarding that we have to get kind of going and processes and procedures that have to get into place. Every school district's going through the same process to get into MOU approved by their local boards.
And that's twenty seven others, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And you've been a leader in this countywide, correct?
Yeah, actually, we're I led that group. Yeah.
I knew I thought.
I think we're finally, we are now we're moving on to AI, Dr. Malcheski's question. The group has now stopped doing mental health focus and moving on to AI focus as superintendent. So it's quite exciting. So as we continue this work, we're not stopping meeting necessarily, just maybe our frequency, but we're really going to continue to to move forward.
Dr. Laurie, as it relates to the county and the funding for this with a no fiscal impact today, I think it would be great to continue to put pressure on the county, assuming we like the services of Hazel Health to continue to fund it at no cost. So instead of each school district trying to decide whether they want to if they like it and they want to continue to support it, that should be done at a county level and the county should be accessing those funds. So I'm I'm just putting that out there. If we like it and it's successful, let's put some pressure on our county to continue to provide that to county.
It's a great way for them to spend some prevention dollars out of their their proposition money that they have. So I I think there's going to be a lot of work around this topic, in particular at the state level. As you know, government news and kind of tries to really set the size down, okay, what are all we offering to our families, where are the gaps? And there are a lot of grants related to really kind of finally creating a cohesive approach from the state to the local or the local healthcare agency to local school districts and county offices of education. So I think we're on the right track. But to your point, it is a great place for folks to to expend some dollars on behalf of all kids.
I also have a question. So this is a program that they can access through their individual insurance. Is that correct?
Eventually. Right now, it's it doesn't require any kind of insurance.
Okay. And but a parent has to consent for the child to like.
There has to be parent consent, yes.
Get consent. And like, will parents be alerted and aware of this? Obviously, like a parent square message or something like that. Because I think a lot of parents in the community would really appreciate this kind of resource and students as well because therapy is expensive. And so would like this be widely advertised to parents and.
Yes, that's that's part of the run up, right? So getting it approved now, so it gives us a long runway up until when we can start, which is going to be in January one rollout. That we have all this time to get kind of that information under the hands. Yep.
And I think too, part of the answer to your question to Dr. Valerius' point that it's the immediacy rather than privately through the insurance with the backlog because there is a real backlog. Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor? No. Motion, please? Any further discussion? Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. We have eleven C approval of proposal with Orange County Department of Education to provide professional development, training and support in mathematics for elementary teachers and administrators in an amount not to see exceed twenty five thousand five hundred.
Thank you. During the last three years, district teachers and administrators have attended multiple sessions with the Orange County, Orange County Department of Education math staff, they're requested regularly. They've been a lot of our district YPD days. They've come in and done different sessions and worked with teachers in different ways. So we've been selected by that department there to develop a teacher leadership program in partnership with them that they're hoping that they can also use with other districts as well. And so the goals are to develop teacher leaders that can then continue to facilitate that and any kind of training for staff or coaching in subsequent years beyond the the program. As well as align practices across grade levels, the plan would be to have two cohorts of teachers, one is a K two group and one is a three five group. And so our certainly our instructional coaches and math tosas will be a part of it. And then we're looking to have at least one teacher from each grade level, preferably two. That could be a part of this work so that in the following subsequent years that we're able to train other staff on these different strategies related to elementary mathematics.
Thank you. Questions from the board? No. Have a motion, please? Oh, I'm public comment. Do we have public?
Sorry, no comments received.
Thank you. Motion, please? Discussion? Then I ask for a suit vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. The we have action item under twelve, superintendents' approval of August seventeenth, twenty twenty three board meeting minutes. Public comment?
None received.
Thank you. This we had a member needed to be absent. So we need to just have a motion and then a vote and an abstention. So second? Student vote?
In favor.
Board members, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you. Have our consent calendar, our public comment on consent calendar.
None received.
Thank you. Any items that board members would like to pull?
I'd just like to discuss thirteen C and E.
Say that again, C and C and E. Right, got it. So if you want to discuss them, then we need to pull them and do them separately. Okay, so then I would any other board members who want to pull items? Then we would need a motion to approve consent items D through D through Q without E. Did I say that? See, well, I didn't start with C. I started with D because we're going, okay, so D through Q without E. Is that is that it? Thank you. I had to read Sam Sheep Can't Sleep Too Many Times a Day. Move approval? Second? I mean, is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? All student vote, sorry.
In favor.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? D, are you? Did you vote? We're voting on everything but the ones you pulled. Okay, thank you. So carries five oh. Do we have item C as a personnel report? We have a motion for that, please?
Move?
Yes. Do we have a second? Okay. Okay, Member Perry?
I just had some further questions about the MTSS and all of the all those stipends for that. Who had the responsibility before for analyzing the MTSS data and planning the action plans?
So Chad and I can speak to this. So prior to to this year, there was it was a combination of there were there were TOSA periods that were provided at the elementary level. There was a six fifths provided to help with the MTSS. And in addition, and a number of additional hours that were provided to to staff that were helping to support that. So it's this year, we we shifted to the MTSS flex pool of forty percent, partly because some of the previous models, it was it was a percent of the person's salary. So say you and I were both doing the same work, working collaboratively on 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 the MTSS program. But say I was a new teacher and you were not, you'd be getting much more money than I was for doing the same work. So we just we wanted to provide each site with the exact amount of money and a forty percent, which is based on range one, step one, about thirty thousand dollars. So it's a from Jeff's standpoint, a great way to budget for it. And it's a lot, actually much more inexpensive than having it be a percent of the the teacher's salary. So we gave we tasked each staff's site admin as well as their their site leadership team to identify who who wanted to kind of share the leadership and share the load to help lead the work on the sites around all everything under the umbrella of MTSS from academics to behavior to social emotional attendance, like things like that.
I found also an administrative cost as far as trying to figure this all out.
Yeah, it really it really streamlined it.
I I think it is much better the way you're doing it where it's step one and it's the same for for everybody. I just I know we've had this program for over ten years and we've analyzed a lot of this data already. And I'm not, I'm just not sure that this is necessary at this level at we're spending over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do this. We already know, like, for instance, we're looking at absenteeism. We already know a lot of the reasons that kids are are absent. You know, whether it's going to visit grandmother or on vacation or they're depressed at school. It it seems to me like we should be looking more at doing something about that than just continuing to analyze this data.
Well, the the data is the actual student data, like students academic data. So it's it changes with the student needs. So what you're doing is you're looking at the the academic data you collect, the attendance data you collect about the individual students that are there this year. So and then you what you're doing is and then from there, you're you're identifying what interventions are we going to put in place? So it's not just sitting in a room looking at numbers. You're actually developing a plan to meet the needs of the students where they're at and develop interventions and implement interventions to do like especially with academics, every six weeks, you're looking at where should the students move? Should they move from from the tier three to tier two, from tier two to tier one? So you're constantly looking at how the students are developing, how they're progressing and what are the what are the new interventions to provide those students to continue to improve? So it's not so much that the data is just not stagnant. It's it's that it's fluid. It's changing. So you're constantly reevaluating. And like so with the tenants, for instance, you're finding those students who are not in school. So you're meeting with them and you're providing interventions to ensure that they get to school. You might know why, but you want to be able to the goal is to reduce their their absenteeism. So what you so you're constantly working with and coming up with creative ways to meet to meet the the needs of the students and get them to be in in campus as well as to increase their their math skills, their reading skills. So it's that's the that's.
The state requires also report this. Particularly absentee.
Absentee is absolutely, yes.
Another reason why we need to be doing this.
Well, and and it's and as you, I mean, everyone here knows that, you know, a student that's struggling for any reason, it's complicated, right? Like if they're absent, like that could be something going on with the family, that could be, you know, they could be in distress. There's it's very complicated. So you can spend a lot of time just trying to figure out what's going on with one student, putting in programs, monitoring it just for one student, let alone you know, you might have, you know, fourth grade, you could have ten, twenty, thirty students that you're really looking closely at. And so that takes a chunk of time to really think through and follow up on. You know, and whether and it's really the kids that need it the most, right? They need all those extra eyes on there. And so it's good to have as many people as we have involved because they all we all bring different skills to that. So the more that we can have looking at different areas, trying to uncover different things, because it's rarely is it when we have a kid that's got a lot of absences or low grades, is there's a simple solution to it, right? It's often a very comprehensive things that we're trying something, we're trying that, we're meeting with the family, we're not getting all the story. It's typically very complex to help that student get out of whatever thing that they're struggling at that time.
If so, students absent and one of these co-leaders in absenteeism is going to call that parent and call in that student and meet with them and find out what's going on and try to find out a plan. I I guess, is that what's happening?
That's that's one example, yes.
Okay, because I was looking at the number of hours that this would come out if somebody was getting paid like the you know, a little over fifty dollars an hour. I mean, it is a tremendous amount of hours that are going to be spent on this. And even with the with the academic part, we've done such a great job and we have a lot of things in place. If students are at this level, we kind of know how to bring them up to this level. We're not reinventing a lot of things. I understand that it can be a bit different. But it just seems like for I I'm looking at from a student point of view, I like things that not that this impacts students, but that impacts students immediately. Like another, you know, if it was another like another teaching aid that would impact directly or say at the elementary, a a drama and spoken word teacher that made kids really excited to come to school. So they didn't want to miss. I mean, I can I I'm looking at that amount of money and just wondering, since we've had the program for ten years, if it's really necessary to spend this much money analyzing and looking at solutions that I I if if we're really going to call everybody in and their parents, and you know, that that's different. I didn't I didn't see that happening before where, you know, a teacher called in a student that's not hers but talked to that student and that parent and tried to figure out why that student was missing school.
I mean, that that's exactly what we the question that we received specifically asked for what the jobs were entailed in. For example, the attendance point one specifically says that they'll analyze attendance data, identify goals for students and for families, track the data, create plans for both tier one, two and three supports and interventions. So that's exactly what they're doing, right? They're looking at the students who are the tier three students who are whose attendance is extremely poor, doing follow up, potentially helping the the site administrators send letters to the families. Which is the SARB and DART process, right? Which is our SARB process.
So how is this different from what we've done before?
We've never had somebody doing that.
Oh, so we've never followed up with students that haven't come to.
We haven't had a teacher in helping to support that work. At sixteen to seventeen percent chronic absenteeism, we felt like it was it's definitely something we need to spend some time and energy on to get students to school. Right? So we're we're putting a concerted effort here. So just I I would say we have not been doing this for ten years. Because it that hasn't been happening. We weren't sending SARB letters before I got here. So the and I haven't been here for ten years. So that was not happening to that extent. So the expectations are really clearly lined out. You know, what we have done is asked our principals what they need to be successful and what supports they need. And this is what they came back with. So that's why we're supporting and bringing it forward to the board for consideration.
I think.
And this, oh, sorry. And the schools are are doing different things. Like I see TOW is also including some classified people and maybe parents on their team. Is that right? And Elmore was not?
No. The this is the specific to the the question, the personnel report related to these items. That's what we were responding to. The details in terms of what participation in MTSS in general could include other people, that's unrelated to this is specifically to the point for flex pool stipend that we provided to principals. So we looked at it as as a way by which we provided fairness to all employees so that you didn't have two teachers doing the same job, getting paid different rates of pay. So we allow our teacher, our principals to work with their teams to identify what are their needs and how are they going to work within this point for flexible pool to address those needs. And that's that's ultimately what they've come up with is their plan to help address that and and what to I think Dr. Malchuski's point, it takes a village, it takes a village of people at our school sites to be a part of this process. It cannot rest in the hands of one person. And that's ultimately what we've realized. And that's why we've had such success, I would say, and why to our point around when you saw the end of the year reports. We have good systems in place. It's because we have people helping to support the work at varying levels.
I do think I have heard some definite comments from the board of addressing the absenteeism issue and and some real concern about it. So I think this is an an increase in that in a response to that and it may be a different more expansive approach.
And this may be helpful. I know, you know, I just think how how difficult it is, like two people that kept their kids home a lot told me it was because their child, these were elementary, their child's teacher didn't like them. Now, from a teacher point of view, I know that probably wasn't true. But the children did not feel comfortable and the parent did not feel comfortable. I said, go to the teacher. No, that'll make it worse. Go to the principal. No, that they'll just tell the teacher and that'll make it worse. And maybe talking to a teacher that isn't their child's teacher might be helpful. I mean, I'm I'm willing to try other things and other.
I feel like we're a little off topic on on that last comment. It's not I'm not trying to undermine it, but we're looking at professionals on the PERS report that we're dividing up to jointly tackle behavior, attendance and academic issues. I think if we all agree that more people involved in that work, kudos for site administrators getting many people involved in that work versus one or two. I'm in support of that. And I wanted to just stay on topic with what we're looking at. I'm in support of that. I wanted to just stay on topic with what we're looking at, which is all those names on the PERS report.
I mean, I'm in support, but not of just gathering statistics. And doing a plan that we've done before. If we're really doing something different, if we're really contacting people. If we're really using it in a different way, yes, but if it's similar to what. Our TOS has have done and it's. Uh, I think there has to be, we we have to see some some results that it has to be better.
Dr. Valori, is this some of the work that Dr. Hatchell has talked about at her uh, MTSS overhaul? Is that part of this transition or is that a different? Model that she used? Because I've heard her talk about that.
This this is that, yeah. So I would say again, going back to the the question about results. The the data you saw related to the reading results, the behavior things that you saw in terms of results here at Thurston Middle School last year. Uh, this was the similar model that that uh, Mr. Verdol used last year. So uh, I I believe we have seen results of this um, uh, this work. Um, and if you were to talk to the teachers, uh, unfortunately, uh, Sarah Hopper left. If you were to talk to Sarah and the team. Particularly here, um, you know, they're very happy with having this as options. They believe it creates a shared leadership. Around these topics. And so we would not bring this forward to the board for consideration if it's not something that. The site administration felt so strongly about it. We just, again, from our perspective, we wanted to create a potential equity. For our staff as it relates to this, so that we, that's why we put it in the flex pool and did and pulled it out of regular FTE that they were assigning. Because again, if a person is a, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar employee, that's a lot different of a ten percent than if the person is. Um, you know, eighty thousand dollar employee and they could very well be doing similar work. So.
Can I move the question? Can we put this to a vote?
Yes.
All right. Next item is E, the acceptance of gifts.
Yes, um.
So before we we discuss it, we need a motion.
Motion to discuss.
Yes, to discuss, you need a motion. Is there public, well, we had public comment and consent, but not on this. Okay.
Um. Do, do we know um, William Klein and Jenny Blink?
No.
Okay, um, I I just wanted to re- really acknowledge the the person that they were donating it. Donating the money for in memory of Julie Hamm was a very good friend of mine and a wonderful person and volunteer at. Elmore through the after-school program with um, AAUW. And this was just such a thoughtful gift. And I wondered if it came from. Um, chi- children's parents that she helped or if it came from fellow volunteers. It doesn't really matter, but. Uh, I'd also like to acknowledge all of the wonderful volunteers that come and help children after school at Elmore.
My understanding is that uh, it was a request of the family um, that in lieu of donations to them and. That instead they donate money to her in her honor to Elmore. So I I we would don't know who they're coming from. It was just a request from the family and so we've been receiving checks um, forever on her behalf. Not something that we requested. It was something the family has requested of people, so.
I was at the memorial and I saw the re- their request and I didn't remember seeing that, but that's great.
Yeah. It's online, looking right at it.
Yeah, and we've had that, we've had it before.
Yeah.
We had it, we had some of these gifts at the last meeting, I believe.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
That's so generous. That's lovely. What a, what a lovely gesture.
But we need to have a mo- a vote. So student vote.
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor? I oppose, carries five oh. We have um, governance items under this fourteen section, information items, discussion regarding city meeting dates for twenty fourteen.
So we just, this is premature, um, but we typically like to. Give you a little bit of a heads up on these as potential. Again, these are not um, set in stone. Wanted to have you take a look and if there's um, you know, board direction to move some things around. Obviously, you know, we uh. We move, we can move these around as you wish. The board policy allows you to. They don't have to be on Thursdays. You can move them to wherever. I'd point out the one in red, I thought was really important for the board to see because. I know we're trying to get um, down to, you know, having kind of one business meeting as much as possible. The the timing of the first interim due date and our annual organizational meeting. The annual organizational meeting has to be held between the thirteenth and the twenty seventh. The first interim report is due um, on the, by the fifteenth. So if you wanted to join those two meetings together, we can, we can do that. It's just not going to be on your traditional day. Um, otherwise, we do need to host, you know, a meeting on the twelfth for one item, which would be the first interim, because it's required by. Code that we get it to um, uh, where it needs to be on time. And then we can have uh, the uh. Business meeting for annual organization later, or we combine those. And again, we're not making decisions tonight, but I wanted to get some board. Discussion around that. And if there's anything that is problematic, I know that we've had questions related to. The meetings in June and kind of some of the challenges that that has now that we end when we do and end in June and the dead weeks for sports. Where there are no sports, so some folks are traveling. So if there's things we want to start making adjustments to, want to get the board feedback around those so that we can come back again. And then that way, when we bring this back for full approval, it's not like the first time you're seeing it and saying, oh, we should change this, that, or the other. So. You know, we'll have a couple more opportunities for it, but really just, we can have a brief, brief conversation if that's something the board wishes to have tonight, or we can table it for another.
Personally, I would love to combine those December meetings. It's, I'm actually out of town, I think, on the twelfth anyway, but it seems. December's already so difficult to have two Thursdays in a row.
Yeah, that would be my. Kind of saw that and thought that probably would be, knowing everything that goes on in December too, it it can be challenging. So we can look for a date. It won't be more than likely, obviously, on a Thursday, so we can look for a date that works. Maybe try to avoid conflicts with with city um, in their meetings, so.
I would agree. I think we should combine.
I agree with that. And then um, I I would be unavailable and in support of not having a board meeting. June seventeenth to the twenty eighth, that is our CIF dead period. And so for uh, families with high school. Students, that's our only two weeks to travel. Sometimes it feels like for the entire year, for the twelve months, that we get those two weeks off. So um, that's June seventeenth through twenty eighth. Doesn't mean I couldn't miss a meeting, but I definitely would not be available. Because the athletic director uh, announces that uh, dead period at the beginning of the year.
So we could look at a meeting the week, I I know it's a busy week of um, you know, of graduation week, but we could look at a meeting on maybe having something on. Tuesday, the eleventh instead. I mean, again. We could throw out some dates and bring back some options if that's something the board's okay with, if we consider. Kind of looking for another date. With graduation will be the thirteenth. Um, so it'd have to be, I mean, if we did it that week, we have a recognition on the sixth. Um, we do have business we do need to attend to in June, obviously. Um, so you know, I have no. I don't think there's a concern necessarily of moving it earlier into that week. Um, it just means, obviously, we'll, we'll all be seeing each other quite a bit that week, which is okay. It's just, we dedicate a week and we're going to be all together, so. Um, so we can bring back a couple options for a board consideration if that's okay for that June week as well. Okay. Oh, well, I don't think we we want you to call from the ice. You might slip, so we'll, we'll, we'll let you go from that one. We can um. We can look to shifting that uh, as well. If there was interest, I don't know, are you going to be around the eighteenth? So we can bring back a couple options. If you're not, but again, if we can bring them back for the board to look at and then. You know, if it's, I can't make this one over that one, then we just say, we'll stick with this one, you know, just options, um, if that's something.
Don't look so worried, Dee. We're just starting this as, like you said, a preliminary discussion so that we can try to avoid.
I, yeah, I, I've looked at those and I plan things around. The dates, those dates, knowing that they might change, but if we start changing everything, um. I'm going to miss a lot.
We're not going to change everything. This preliminary is to kind of get the feedback, like what Dr. Kelly just gave us, that he won't be available for that meeting. Now, two uh, two others then said. Uh, same for me, then we'd know we'd have to have a different date because we only have two people. So that's the purpose of this. We're not going to change, in my opinion.
Right, it's your choice.
We're going to change as few as we can, because I think, yes, we'll miss. Because. I think it's not, maybe not as big of an issue now, but I think over. From a perspective, it was always like, school board, city council, people want to know when the meeting is. So that they're not saying, well, I thought it was always on this date, but now you're moving them. And so, you know, it, there is that. There is that reason behind it of trying to be as consistent as you can be. But it it is nice that we have the flexibility. Because we'd rather have people here than not.
Okay, I mean, we could shift the January, we have January twenty third right now as a recognition event. We can shift that, that business meeting. Again, there's options.
Right.
I just, I don't know what everyone's calendars impacts are, so that's why, again, that's why we're trying to do it now. And it it is premature, but. I figured now is much easier than trying to do it in in December, um, because.
The main thing is that we have consensus on is combining the December.
December meetings and we'll look for an option in June and and bring back an option for June.
A June, right.
And then maybe what you can do, uh, in the meantime is members can look at this, um. And if specific meetings you cannot make, let Victoria and myself know. And then that way we could kind of gather and see if what are the challenging spots and. Then we, when we come back at the next meeting, we can say, well, here's what we know, right? We know that Dr. Kelly's going to miss this one for sure. Um, uh, you know, Dr. Mocheski is going to be gone for this one for sure, potentially. You know, whatever it is that we have. And then if we people want to adjust, we can, or we can say, okay, we're confident that we have quorum. Because that, you know, we have to have that in order to have a meeting, so. So if that's good, we'll, we'll work on those couple and then we can bring them back again at the next meeting. That's.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
So next um, governance item, fourteen B, Orange County Committee on School District Organization.
So the Orange County's uh, Board of Education um. Has again, elected body um, that represents, well. Don't say they represent any of the district. No. Um, so the, they're made up of five, they're voted in, um. They petitioned the State Board of Education uh, to dissolve what's called the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. And as mentioned in the background, um, the county committee has responsibility in a variety of areas. Um, under this uh, under ed code, actually, this is allowed. Uh, the county board um, was, is wishing to assume those responsibilities. The county committee is made up of school board members. Um, from throughout our uh, Orange County. Um, so what uh, the discussion really is, is one, what's the board stance on the, on on this? And if the board direction is to um, uh, sign on to a, the letter that is um. Going throughout the county right now, that would say, we wish to just maintain the county committee as is. And do not wish to have the Board of Education taking over that authority. So. I can tell you myself as superintendent, I am signing on to that letter as myself. Um, as a superintendent, because we've been asked by the state board for our opinion as superintendents. Um, I'm now soliciting what your viewpoints are so that I can determine if. Or you can determine if you would like the districts and all of your names attached to it, or whether it'll just be mine.
Me also. Ask a question?
Yes.
What is the relationship of the committee? I know what it does um. To our work specifically. Do we work with that committee? Do we have representation?
We have representation, um, depending on one of, if one of you wants to be on the committee, um, there is the opportunity to, there's actually seats. That will be determined at the Orange County School Board Association meeting coming up.
But it has representation throughout the county as opposed to the Board of Education.
Which is five members, yes.
Yeah. And how many people are on the committee?
I can address it if you.
Yeah, you have the details on that part.
Yeah, so as your CSBA delegate, yes, which you guys nominated me for. Uh, Dr. Macheski, there's two per supervisory district, supervis- supervisors district. So in the fifth district, there's two seats. So you can be a trustee. You don't have to be a school board trustee. You could be a school site council person, PTA person. But they're nominated to represent. Uh, those counties, those, those divisions within the county. So two for each supervisors area and then one at large. So that makes. Five supervisor areas, so eleven people. And they actually do need in the fifth district because they redistricted the counties. Some of the people that were on there had to move around, so there are vacancies in our um, supervisors district, in the fifth district. So as a board, if we want to make sure that there's the, our voice of public education. On that county committee, which is an important committee, because it could reestablish, we could go to trustee areas if they wanted to make that happen in our. District, we could, uh, that we would have representation in. So if any of us are interested or we have people that might want to sit on that, we would also nominate them. Jim or Dr. Kelly would actually nominate them. And we are doing that this month. So, does that answer your question? Eleven. Uh, yes, so you could, as long as they're in the fifth district, the supervisor Foley's district. Um, you, you, there's two that sit in. Oftentimes, they are school board trustees because they understand the inner workings of. What this county committee does. So Dr. Kelly was considering it. Um, I've been asked, but if there's people you know that would like to serve. And feel passionately about public education in our county, this would be a good spot for them too.
Board that wishes to support this is staying local and not having the county department, the county board take it over. Yes, okay.
I will share a copy of the letter that will be going out um, in the weekly update, so that you're aware of what your name is being attached to. Um, and I do appreciate the support as well. So thank you.
Would you like their student board, would they, they put their names on it?
Would you like to have your name on it? Okay, done.
Governance action item, uh, first reading of board policy six one four five point six, international exchange, the public comment.
None received.
Thank you.
We've been going round and round and I think we finally landed. Um, as I mentioned, uh, at our last meeting when we had um. Uh, someone who works in the student exchange placement um, uh, area. Um, we are providing you tonight with um, a recommendation to. Uh, allow us to waive the fees associated with attendance in the school district. We have an opinion that we can feel confident. Uh, we are legally allowed to do that. Um, and so we're recommending that to you. Uh, for your consideration as a first read tonight.
Questions? We have a a motion to bring this back for a second read. Do you need that? I mean, you need to vote, right, to bring it back as a second read? Okay. Any discussion? Student vote?
In favor.
Okay, all in favor? I oppose, carries five oh. Took us a while, but we got there. So we have one more section of governance reporting. We have board member, board member reports.
All right, thank you, President Vickers. Um, quick report, President Vickers and I have met as the. Facilities committee recently this week with city council and staff to keep them updated on our facilities master planning. Um, process specifically on the aquatic center. Um, I'm looking forward to our meeting next week on that. Um, I also attended Thurston and back, uh, Thurston and the high school back to school nights. And um, one parent told me at the high school back to school night, she was an elementary school parent. She told me this last night in the um, trustee meeting for school power. She was surprised how many parents at high school level go to back to school night. And there was a comment, there were so many people at high school back to school night in the artist theater that they were sitting in the aisles. That we might have had a file, a fire code violation. I looked around, there was plenty of open seats, but anyhow. There was a lot of people there and they were really engaged. And I think that was just so neat to see at the high school level. I know Dr. Allman's not here, but he does such a great job. And all the high school parents just think he does a great job. So that was back to school night. Back to school breakfast was great. Um, we missed you, Dr. Kelly, but it was great. And then uh, two important meetings that I had, one was with um, the Laguna Beach Subcommittee for Sustainability. They call it something else possibly. And also there was parking. And also there was parking traffic and circulation. Um, Mr. Dixon was there and we had a discussion on safe routes to school. And the board should know that Caltrans uh regularly, at least in each of their annual grant cycles, gives out about four hundred thousand dollars. For a school-related safe routes project. They'll give out millions of dollars. I think they gave out forty million in this last grant cycle. But usually there's a school district and a city teamed up, so that's something to look at, and that's what we discussed. And then I also met with um our local chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. And they had done some past work with. Um, M U N and want to get back involved with however they can be supportive um to our government classes or M U N classes. They're so pleased with all the work the sport is doing. And just want to be supportive. So. Um, that's it. And then Dr. Valori and I were at the School Power trustee meeting yesterday evening. They have twelve new um pairs of um trustees, and they're all really excited and just generously give their time. And their uh financial resources for the betterment of our students. So what a great group.
To go along with what Clerk Osborne was talking about, um. I attended the networking for Laguna Canyon Conservancy. With all of the different environmental groups and got to. Really acknowledge Clerk Osborne and all that she's done, and they were thrilled, the different groups with our environmental resolutions. In looking at our school culture goals of each student will strengthen connections to school, community. And the world by engaging in activities that build skills and responsibility. That every group is very eager to work with the school district and um. Lots of wonder they, I heard from a lot of people about different opportunities that they would have for students. It sounded. Really fascinating as far as working on um different kinds of studies. Doing photography of wildlife, um, working on the tunnels for. Animals to be able to go back and forth between yeah different. Open areas. Um, anyway, um, a lot of ideas for the sustainability committee maybe. Um, CCA has had a lot. They're. A finalist for the Golden Bell Awards for their elementary, middle and high school career programs, and I think. All of their middle schools now have career labs. Um, there's two new classes. One is at the Mission Hospital Internship, which. Students get to go through fourteen rotations, so they see almost all of the departments and um the. Brian Carver is kind of leading it, the cornhole. Champion. We weren't able to get any of our students into that program due to timing. Um, the students were nominated by their medical classes, but we're really hoping to be able to bring that program here next year to. Um, our local hospital. And the other program that. The um new program is the advanced deviation class that was student-driven. There were so many students that went through aviation. And wanted the next level. That they they're doing that, and with that, they will be able to take the test for a private. For a private flying license. And I know, well, one of my neighbors took that. It it had to drive way out Mission Viejo somewhere, but one of my um former students that is at actually. Twenty-five now, a uh uh young woman became a commercial pilot. And so I know there's a lot of interest in that program. I wish we had something a little bit closer here for us. I am, they also, um, let's see. Are adding those badges now that students can add to show mastery on their LinkedIn accounts. And students that finish one of the pathways that they get that on their account, and that really helps them with jobs. And I know. The govern governor's executive order wants C T A C T master plan by fall twenty-four, which is focused on hands-on learning. And he would really like to help get, help students to get paid internships. There's a new culinary center at Shorecliffs Middle School that looks fantastic, and there's a lot more interested in that now with. Um, all the chef shows, but also like Mr. Dixon was saying, eating healthy and nutrition. The classes were absolutely full that just started. And let's see, at the School Power Endowment meeting, they're very excited about the family center opening. But also um all the after-school programs, and I guess seventy-four percent of our students. Um, were involved in after-school programs and we gave fifty, they gave fifty-one grants to students, School Power did. They're changing the after-school programs to six weeks, six weeks each of four sessions. They think that will work out better. Um. Let's see, there are already ninety ninety people signed up for their parent book club, reading The Price of Privilege. And of course, they're doing a great job with the investments. They keep tweaking tweaking them and looking long term. Um, I met with the Proposition Twenty-Eight Art Group, which is kind of a watchdog for how funds are spent. On that school districts are spending the Prop Twenty-Eight funds, and I attended a Thrivefully Seminar on Student Hope.
I attended two events. Um, one was the PTA Council meeting, and I could fill the rest of the hour with everything that the PTA is doing. Uh, but I will not bore you since uh Superintendent Bay area already sent out our latest uh. Communicate. Uh, he was there and he summarized it very nicely, so I'm not going to go over all the stuff they're doing, but they're just really, really impressive group, and I. I just really, I'm so glad that uh I'm on there. Uh, I talked about our facilities plan and I asked for feedback on. Uh, the sizes of pools, and so I've been getting some very nice feedback uh on on that. The other event that I went to was I represent us on the um, the Community Connections uh group. Um, which has to do with drugs and alcohol. It used to be something that we chaired. And um now it's chaired by uh Mission Hospital. They handed out three handouts, which I've asked Victoria to send out to you. Uh, I found them a little confusing because uh the dates are, the data doesn't seem to fit in current dates and uh. The nice thing is that our representative also is Dr. Keller, and he does such a nice job representing us. And so. I was grateful that he was there, but I just one of the, some of the concerns are, again, they have data on. Alcohol and marijuana. Uh, they don't have anything on fentanyl, which I think is sad that uh since that seems to be. A real epidemic, you know, right now. Um, they are concerned about the social host ordinance, whereas. Parents are allowing children to have parties at their house and are providing um alcohol for them. Um, and so you can look at the uh, the California Healthy Kids data yourself and see if you have any questions. One interesting thing was um during the first week of school, three tenth graders uh unrelated to one another were sent to diversion programs for uh. For drug use that by our SRO reported, reported that. And then there's another chart that talks about um. Drug um drug and hospital hospitalizations and and it only gives you the years two thirteen through two fifteen. And we we ranked second in that in that grouping, and I was trying to find out. Well, what were they hospitalized for? But they couldn't tell me that. So uh, I don't know. If you you look at it and you 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 you'll have better questions, I'm sure, or summaries of this, but. Very interesting that young adults between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four years old have the largest increase in substance-related deaths between. Twenty nineteen and twenty 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 in Orange County. It was up one hundred and sixty-five percent. Um, and Orange County has a higher hospitalization rate for alcohol and substance abuse compared to seventy-five percent of other counties. So. It's a a major, major concern, and it's something we have to be doing everything we can to uh educate uh our students and our families about uh this epidemic. And again, you'll get all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. I was able to go to um all the back-to-school nights and found them all just a lot of excited. Parents, but teachers. The excitement from the teachers was really impressive and listened to them, talked to their parents and the students in their classes. One thing I heard um emphasized was the importance of reading and um. You know, different, different approaches at different levels, but that was a overall approach. And and another I heard uh several times was. Not much homework because they wanted family interaction. They wanted to be able to support the family, the family time and not to have. Um, the continuation of schoolwork interfered with that. And for me, I mean, I, that's, that's a philosophy that I support and have seen at work. With my own kids through the years. So I think it was just, but it was just um. Really, really a pleasure to go this year, and I don't, I don't know whether it's. A greater appreciation of having school after we went through the pandemic and the closures. But it just, it was noticeable. And like I said, particularly, teachers were just. They were on. I mean, they were just, you want to go, I want to go to this class. So that was really great. And then um. As Dee mentioned about the CCA, just two additional things. They did open an esports program at DeSoro. And um that seems to be an area of growth and put in possible employment for students uh and in the future. And they also have a, I think it's medical assisting, that they're opening at the old continuation school that's now Union High School for adults. And for uh ESL adults specifically, so to try to increase um some job opportunities for those folks. And they're aligning it with where they thought the. They'd have more people close by so they could get there. Then uh I'm just appreciative, and I know the high school principal left. But they did citywide announcements on the Bottle Rocket stuff, and it was on their marquee, but it also came out as the city noticed that they send you online. And um that was just very considerate of us being considered of the community, so they would know, particularly in this day and age, they don't think we're being bombed. See if there's anything, I think. Oh, I'm connection with what you had said. I'd asked Dr. Valori some questions about. Um, teachers. So I'd been reading so much about the college level with concern about A I. And uh he said our, like, high school English teachers are definitely talking and addressing it and seeing. How it's, how it can be incorporated, but also how it's so that they can still have students. Being, doing their work and but how they can use it so that it's not. A negative but becomes a positive. And. I also asked him specifically about one program that was on the sheet tonight grammarly, because I had read about for general population. Data mining on so many things that we use, and we have various systems in place so that if. Our student population is using that, that they're not subject to the data mining. So it's a, it's a good topic, and I was going to ask that. I mean, keeping us continually apprised of how we're handling that in at the district level. And so that's your report.
I have only one thing. Unfortunately, uh, A B sixteen ninety-nine is sitting on the governor's desk. Um, although. What? No, I hadn't, I haven't done that yet. So um. Unfortunately, even through all of our uh uh letter writing, and I know uh several uh folks reached out to local legislators. Um, they still voted yes for it. Um, and uh it's, it is sitting on the governor's desk. You actually probably have an email in your inbox from Justin Massey from C S B A. C S B A is taking a no approach, um, just like pretty much every other um uh organization acts, et cetera. Um, so uh when you see that email from uh Mr. Massey, I would encourage you to feel free to click on it and. Let the governor know we are continuing uh to hope that he um. Realizes the flaws in that uh in that bill, because there are many. Um, but uh, you know, it unfortunately may pass and has significant complications and implications for for school districts. Um. You know, I think, I don't know which one of you, maybe it made the reference that if it's so. Uh, or maybe been a fellow superintendent that said if it's so good for us to do in school districts, why don't they do it there at the state level as well? So. Um, they're just now allowing them to unionize, so I thought that was humorous, but um. Sorry, so uh again, I I know we we try to do our best to lobby and um and try to remind folks. Uh, but any um influence you have in terms of sharing your your viewpoints with the governor at this point, Justin has an opportunity for you to do that, and I would highly encourage you to do that. So. Other than that, uh thankfully. We're gonna wrap up the session of of bills and and now all of them are sitting on the governor's desk for signature. Um, uh, at this point, the legislative uh system, you know, kind of processes over. Um. So there's until January when we start all over again. Um, but I appreciate all of your support over this this last year, because there's been a lot of different bills being tossed around. Um, and again, as I've said before, they love education. So we seem to be one of the ones that love to pass the most with. So that's my report.
Thank you. So we need a motion to adjourn. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor, aye, opposed, thank you.